Today is Wednesday, August 12th. Actually, before I do that, go ahead and talk to my good friends.
Today's Thursday.
Are we good?
Please stop.
Okay, perfect. All right. Today's Thursday, August 12th. Our last day of our three-day budget retreat. The time is nine oh two, and we will go ahead and get started. Before we do, council member Merritt, are you, can you hear us? Can you just want to make sure? Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. All right. And first up, we have our economic development presentation with Ms. Allison. Floor is yours.
All righty. Okay, the first one I'm doing is to call Ted. Yes.
I'm not going to make the council member move around.
Oh, what do I do?
Just drag him around.
Drag him around. I'm going to drag you around.
Don't abuse him, Allison.
I haven't told any of you anymore.
I am not the one dragging you around.
Actually, can you, can you click on that again and add the four square? Right now, I think you clicked on two. Can you add the four to see what that does? Okay.
That's to cover some more. You want it bigger?
It does. Okay, that's fine. Because this one only gives us two, and that's why we couldn't see the mayor yesterday.
Well.
Do we need to see ourselves?
No, the mayor hasn't been on. The mayor hasn't been on.
He's been this morning.
He hadn't been on the screen.
He will be. He just texted me, he said he's not on. I'm like, text me, please. So he will. I think he's just wrapping up a call. Okay. Thank you.
Does this work, Kevin?
Sure.
Okay. All righty. So TIF four. Our attorney came all the way in for this exciting presentation today, so we thank him for that. Maybe not. Now, Tina Fergens has been working on this, and so she couldn't be here today, so I'm going over this with everybody. The I-35 corridor vision study that we adopted in February of 2021 came up with these action items in a 20-year vision plan. So some of the action items are what the TIF would help with. Rezoning, stationary expansion, corridor enhancements. We talked about expanding the SLA grant program just for this corridor to make it better for owners on the corridor. Property acquisition, that's a big number. Roadways, sidewalk, and access improvement. So improvements just in general. But the study did recommend creating funding sources, and TIF is just a natural funding source for this corridor. So in January 2021, we were directed to hire a consultant. So Mark Stein was Stein Planning, has been doing all of the financial analysis for the TIF. And the implementation phase just came from his analysis in the study, which is right here. So here's the corridor, and we have certain areas that the study defined, and I know y'all have seen this before, but we've talked about making the station area west of 35. And when we say that, that means the Form-based code will be west of 35 in a certain area, so it matches the station area. And that is the orangish-yellow area right there. The other, the turquoise is kind of like a set light industrial area. That's going to be harder to transition, but your station area, those properties would be better to transition over. So it's approximately 1,083 acres, and we have a component of residential that is under 30%, which is what's needed. So 29% of the whole area is the residential for the TIF.
Allison, can you move David down so you folks can see the residential?
Okay, David, I'm dragging you again, so just... I don't even know where to put him, because, okay, well...
Can you just put him on the bottom right corner?
Yeah, bottom right.
Because we don't have to see the...
Okay, because the red is the study boundary, and the yellow is the proposed TIF. We can't use all of this TIF in the study boundary because this is already in a TIF. So that's the reason of the TIF boundary. So I'll drag him a little more. Okay. So the pink area is 271 acres. And any kind of TIF funds could help improvements in the area, such as drainage. We do have a creek over there. We have streets, obviously. So just the natural improvements that you have for a certain area, that now could help the residential component that is within our I-35 corridor. Here are some assumptions.
Before you leave, Allison, because I've spoken to a number of council members. I don't think I've spoken to all of them, but we originally talked about the TIF boundaries just being the I-35 corridor, which is all commercial. But when we're putting this together, I started thinking that, you know, that residential community to the right is a focus area that councils had for a number of years, and that if we included that in the TIF boundary, that all of a sudden you could potentially have a funding source to help improve not just the commercial district, but the residential district. And so just by including that boundary, you at least have the option. You don't have to. Future councils could still say, hey, we're not going to use any of this TIF money to help the residential area. But this at least allows the option that if you want to. Because currently, we really don't have a funding source to improve that area on an ongoing basis other than the residential redevelopment bonds that were passed. And this provides that opportunity. Again, councils can say, we're not going to spend any money over there, but at least it gives you the opportunity.
Correct. Because bond money will run out one day.
Correct.
And is that just north of, is that just north of Josie? Is that Josie, I mean, Valley View at the yellow, or is that Bowwood?
This is Valley View.
Okay.
And this is...
Were that yellow?
So the yellow's definitely...
The yellow, is that...
I think this is Squire or Richland.
Okay.
Or Squire. Because the rest of this is already in a TIF. So you have a TIF already for those properties.
It's basically District One.
Yeah, District One. And it's all west of Josie. So here's the shopping center at Josie and near Bowwood.
Yeah.
And that's Farmer's Branch Park right there.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other piece philosophically, the thought was that, okay, if we have a TIF and we're really going to spiff up a commercial district to potentially open... All this, we're talking years to get fruition and turn this into a different vision, right? But the thought is, over time, as we spiff up, for lack of a better term, spiff up the commercial corridor, it'd be kind of, you don't want to have such a huge divergence to you have a residential neighborhood right next door that is still suffering or somewhat distressed with a, you know, a gleaming corridor of office towers potentially. So that was kind of the thought here, too, to try and have some equity between the two.
Yeah, balance it.
Makes sense.
So we have two assumptions built into the TIF plan. One is the 100% of city participation, and one is 55% of the county participation. So we would need to go to the county. We were waiting till we had more of these numbers set, and we're pretty close to that. So we've built assumptions with county as well.
And we've talked to them. We had that discussion already with the budget officer of Dallas County, and they're very interested.
Yes, so this is a high probability.
Yeah, because both Denton Drive, which is a county road, and the fact that this is a low-modem neighborhood, that's the bread and butter for Dallas County, so they're very interested.
And the base year, if we do it now, could be January 1st, 2021, property values for the base year, which is important to set, because we do, we will have a lot of properties hopefully transition that former LMO site, that's grass, that'll be 100% of an increment of something when that transitions. So land within the TIF is exempt from Citi Bell Two cap, which Sherelle and Charles can talk to y'all about at Lake. Cap within values of a TIF.
Well, yeah, let me...
And...
I've covered that three minutes.
Yeah. And so October 2021 is when we adopted the boundaries and preliminary financial planning. And then Mark Stein is one helping with the plan. And the plan would include, if we know of certain projects, like it allows us to do, you can fold in. If we have any kind of incentive agreement, say with a large campus, you can fold that into your financing plan, because that can help you pay those obligations down the road through the TIF, as an example. Does anyone else have any questions? We had to pull some of the boundary from the left to get to our 30% residential, so we went a little bit to dip from that.
Councilman Lynn.
So funds from the TIF, could they also be used, if we included the pink area, to sort of fund just a separate demo rebuild program for that area?
Probably not, because TIF funds generally, unless they're tied to economic development projects, have to be used for public infrastructure.
But it could certainly be used to redo all the streets or...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Things of that nature.
Improve streams, water sewer, capacity, to the extent we need to rebuild any old infrastructure. You know, parks, I mean, as long as...
Creek improvements?
Depends. I mean, how it's structured.
It's a publicly owned project.
If it's, yeah, if we've got public rights away and we treat it as more along the lines of a park, open space, from a park, open space project, we could probably use it for that kind of purpose. It just depends on, we just have to, you know, the primary focus is going to need to be on public infrastructure. Public projects. And, you know, so we can do it that way. Like I said, there's some economic development, but typically, demo rebuild, probably not necessarily economic development.
But my thought in mentioning the creek was, if we could use or pull funds from the TIF to use to fund creek improvements up there, then it might save money that we've already committed, as Mark was talking about yesterday, to be able to use something else.
Somewhere else.
So it gives him a different funding source to do the same work.
So whenever, so we did, we did a TIF in Lake Island, and in one of the new developments, there's a creek there, and Allison, I think you may remember this. We were able to use it for creek improvements, but that's because there was a trail connection to it. And so I think that was one of...
That's kind of what...
There has to be some type of public, you know, either a park or a trail or something. So I know we were able to use it because of that, but I think we weren't, that's the only reason why we were able to use it. But because we don't have that infrastructure and that creek for that area, I don't think we'll be able to.
Yeah, and you have to be, you have to be careful. I mean, you know, there's creative ways to do almost anything. And we, and we, we started together and we just laughed. But the other thing to keep in mind is, all those folks in that whole area, they're already paying a stormwater utility fee on their water bill. So you have to be careful about essentially double charging them, you know, once through the property tax system and then once through the stormwater utility fee system for really the same thing. So you have to be careful there as to how you're going to do that. It's like in Bowwood. We can't charge anybody in Bowwood a stormwater utility fee if it's going to be for the same improvements, because Bowwood is flood mitigation as well. So we have to make sure we calculate it all out, that nothing relates to improvements in the Bowwood area.
But the good thing, and you make a great point, Terry, is that we're able to offset the buckets. So where if we're doing, if we're able to use this for street infrastructure and all of those things, and we can maneuver the funding from those buckets to go into other areas or bring up some of the projects that are in line to be able to do those improvements.
Right.
Now, keep, you know, of course, always keep in mind, what we're talking about is a redevelopment area. So you've already got some tax value on there as opposed, so your increment, your tax increment, because that's what you're pulling, is whatever the difference is in base tax year versus, you know, whatever new valuation you're able to pull down, may not be as great as it would be if you were doing a TIF on undeveloped property. So that's something that the manager's office and finance are going to need, and work with our consultant are going to need to kind of look at with respect to the feasibility of, or with respect to how big a pot of money you might have over time, because of the fact that you've already got a lot of your value already there, so your increments will be quite a bit smaller than might otherwise be on a, like I said, on a new piece of property.
Allison, for the record, just to make sure, because I know folks will be listening in for that area, can you just talk about what the financial implication would be for the homeowners there, just for the record?
Financial implication? The, we are not creating an additional tax. This is not a PID system or some kind of additional tax on their tax bill. So nothing will change on their tax bill. Dallas County will assess them the same way they've always assessed them, so there's no, there's no change.
Perfect. No, and I just wanted for the record for you to say that, so in case people think, you know, oh, well, we're going to get taxed again, they know that it's, nothing's changing for them. It's just actually a positive opportunity for them to be able to take advantage of this.
Yeah, a TIF is really a city mechanism to do city work, and it does, it's not like a PID where you self-impose a tax, an additional tax. So we're, we're not, yeah, we're not imposing any additional tax.
Yeah, this is kind of a mechanism to keep people's property taxes local to some extent.
Exactly. That's true.
Yeah, I just wanted for the record, because I know a lot of folks don't really understand the difference between PIDs and TIFs and everything. So in case anybody is listening, they realize that it's not another assessment that they will be given.
Yeah, that's true. So a good way to think of it is, it's just creating a little net for a certain area, and instead of using general fund for a lot of things, money for this specific area for new increment, new tax growth can be used within this polygon. So that's all. We're already getting the money anyway, but now we're earmarking it for a certain area. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Questions? We can go back to the map. Or we can just keep going. I have a stationary update and then target area situation, so. Any more TIF questions? I mean, I'm assuming we'll come back with greater detail. Mr. Stein is working on a finance plan. We'll come back to you with all of the numbers behind that for this fall.
I think that's smart. I think it's smart to include the residential area in that as part of that corridor study and in any way that we can help.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you don't like the TIF, this is the time to say.
Councilmember Merritt, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just had one question. I think we've talked that there is another TIF around the station area. I think if we do a graphic, it would be helpful to have that other TIF outlined on the graphic.
Right. So, yes, exactly. So the other TIF is below the yellow line, essentially, so they don't overlap, because you can't take, you can't do two TIFs on one property. You can, but only one of them's going to get the money.
Correct, but I think, I know it's below the yellow line, but I think if we showed it in an orange color or some other purple color, that there is another TIF.
Yes.
Sorry, thank you.
That's a good point. We'll do that the next time we come back and show the other TIF. Any further questions about TIF four? Moving right along, or no? Yep. Okay. Station area, okay, we were just going to do a brief, hey, this is where we are. We've been working on the station area for, I don't know, two decades, but the RFP went out about a year and a half ago, and COVID put a little pause button on the RFP process, as you know, and we've been getting updates pretty routinely. But just for talking points today for the retreat, we are still obviously in negotiations, and there's various partners involved. We have some Dartland down here. We have North Texas Council of Governments that provides transit funding, and they are looking to help offset the trail that will be going up Denton Drive. And so there are a lot of good things happening, and I put just a timeline. It's kind of aggressive maybe, but it's just something just to keep in mind that during the next 12 to 24 months, we're really going to be nailing down a contract, design plans, and things of that nature. So this is just a high-level overview today of where we are, and we are still moving forward, as y'all know, with the station area RFP negotiations. Any questions about that? So I have another... Okay. Councilmember Merritt, can you see neighborhood renaissance on your screen? I think I shared it.
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. All right. So today we're talking about, we loosely talked about our target area for neighborhood renaissance. This is, you know, not demo rebuild, but just neighborhood renaissance, where we go in, we buy the lot, we clear the lot, and then we sell the lot. We do that everywhere except for District One, our target area. We have not sold lots there, so we've been land banking. So this is a Google Earth map of the city on lots that we have, and I did pull in two that are west of, east of Josie, but primarily everything is west of Josie. So you have 14 lots west of Josie. You have two lots east of Josie. Now, we've been talking a lot about attainable housing and trying to help people, workforce housing, and there's a lot of buzzwords around this goal. And I think what we've all agreed on is there's this middle market that we're trying to help workforce housing. We're trying to help people that are first responders, teachers, servicemen and women. It could be firefighters, policemen, all these different people get into new homes, housing. So if we were to put a new home back, in a perfect scenario, we would sell a lot to a builder, and we'll get into that in a minute, and we were thinking 1,800 to 2,500 square feet is kind of a little sweet spot to start, because the neighborhood already has all one-story, primarily one-story homes, and they don't want their neighborhood to drastically change overnight. You know, they don't want the city to come in and build two-story large 3,500 square foot homes and really change the footprint and the feel of the neighborhood. So we want to be really thoughtful about what we put back matches the intent and the spirit of the existing neighborhood and the existing residents. Now, again, if somebody came along in that process and said, I need more, and I can afford it, and I want a second story, that's fantastic. But our goal has been not to displace anybody and not to price anybody out, but we really want to create a sustainable market for this area. So I put some things that I thought would be helpful, the square footage, one-story residents that complement the neighborhood, functional front porch. And what I mean by functional is, you can actually sit on it and invite neighbors, and it's just a neighborly good feel, so there might be other words for it. And what you can't see, I wrote, two-story residents can fit within the lot if a new resident wants that and they can afford it. The zoning allows it. So I just think that's a pretty front porch. It's from Instagram. It's neighborly. Okay, these are some examples of 1,800 to 2,500, a little bit bigger, that some have front porches that could fit into the neighborhood. We're not trying to do a cookie cutter look. It's not trying to look like a track home field. It's trying to look like a really thoughtful custom feel. And in a perfect world, we would have several designs, and we'd pick them out and we'd put them there. And they're all a bit different. And they all have porches. So we have some potential partners. So today, I'm just telling you about the options that exist now and who we've been meeting with. Builders of Hope, and we met with some builders, and Builders of Hope have kind of risen to the top. They're nonprofit builders. They built in Dallas County primarily. And they're, they also have a status community housing development organization. Some people say CHODO. So they currently build attainable housing in various parts of DFW. Now, they, the Dallas County could be a partner of ours. We don't have to partner with them, but they do provide grants to CHODOs for attainable housing purposes such as this. And you have different area media income, AMI limits. We can move forward with, a few of these can have Dallas County grants, if that's helpful. We don't have to use any of the grant. But these are some options that we have available for us as we move through the process of finding the right partners to accomplish our goal. Do remember, we own the land, so we have a lot of flexibility to accomplish the sales price at the end of the day and find workforce development parameters. And how that is structured in those details could be something that we discuss later on in executive session of what we're selling, how we typically do land discussions.
Allison, David, with a question, if I may. What does Builders of Hope in Dallas County define attainable housing? Is there a written definition for attainable housing in there?
There is. They, they use the definition, and you can pick which one down here of the, is it 80% of AMI? Is it 100%? Within whatever development they work with, they pick one of the AMI categories, depending upon the neighborhood, and that's their definition, and that's who gets to come forward with their grant program.
Okay, so the criteria shown under Dallas County is basically the definition or the applicable definitions for attainable housing in there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And there's another pretty front porch for y'all. Just think about it. So I asked Builders of Hope for some completed homes of the interior finish-out, because that is important to us. Now, remember, for a middle price point, I feel like they're doing a good job for interior finish-out. Now, this is an example of phases, and this is what we could do. Say we did five lots at a time with someone, and say we chose Builders of Hope or anybody. We could approve five house plans, that we decide this really fits and complements the neighborhood. This is a good setting stone for what they can expect, so that the neighbors that are there are happy with what we're putting back into the neighborhood. We determine the sales price of the completed home, and I just put a timeline of how long it could take to build a house. We could indeed restrict it, and we could talk about this in greater detail down the road in executive session when we talk about what we're going to sell it for. But there are ways to make sure that people don't come in and get an affordable home and then flip it a year later, or investors come in and rent it all out. So we have ways to protect our investment, is the reason for the slide. And then Phase Two, rent and repeat. So we have about 15 lots. It's getting harder and harder to find lots in this area or homes in this area, as you know, because the prices continue to rise and the inventory is low. We still get them, try to find off-market properties and opportunities. But again, we're not trying to price anybody out. We're not trying to displace people. We're trying to simply deal with some of the houses that we find are not in good condition and that have not been renovated or touched, and we can go in, we can demolish them and put something that really is nice back into the neighborhood.
And Allison, where the target for the sales price is roughly upper 200s or 300s?
Councilmember Retan and I discussed probably not to exceed 375, 385 not to exceed. So it depends which floor...
Because that's a lot more than I originally...
Well, the twos could be your 1,800 square feet. So it just is a square footage, depends on if somebody comes in the middle of the process and it's not a spec home and they want a little bit more, it's probably going to cost them a little bit more.
Yeah, and the sweet spot really is between, you know, 325. Like the sweet spot, at least for me, is 325. So knowing that some of the lots are a little bigger than others, to where they may be more square footage that you can put in them, but the thing is, is that there are now people that are within that workforce bucket that are now buying in this area. But to me, personally, the sweet spot would be around 325.
And where did you come up with that number?
Just looking at, just comparable to kind of what's going on around the area. Been talking to folks within the area, because really what we envision is creating this ripple effect within the individuals that are already living there, because they have homes that are, haven't been touched for, you know, one reason or another. But for them to be able to see this renaissance and see homes that, you know, that their family wants to move back into Farmer's Branch, they're able to do that now and able to afford to live a couple of blocks from their mother or their grandmother because they grew up in Farmer's Branch.
I know in the past we've talked about attainable housing being, because I think, if I remember right, the benchmark is you shouldn't spend more than 30% of your income for mortgage, and so you kind of back into what that income would be based on. And because that would actually set the target price as well. So that's, that's kind of the traditional way of material housing that we can...
That's right.
Yeah, this is a program completely at the discretion of council and what we want to achieve with it.
Yeah, and also we looked at, we also, and talking to Builders of Hope, because this is what they do. This is their mission. Their philanthropic mission is to ensure that there is attainable housing in areas that are beginning... in areas that are beginning to gentrify. And so a lot of the context behind the pricing and everything, and also we have to look at too, the increased pricing and being able to even build a home, right?
Yeah, that's part of it.
Which is part of it, but, but a lot of this came from the conversation that we have with Builders of Hope to really try and figure out what, what is working in other areas of our region and how can we create something similar, but that still meets the needs that we're trying to meet within our own community.
Just from a math standpoint, if we're looking at an income from your previous slide of 80,000, 30% of that is $2,400 a month home payment. So I think if we're looking at 375, we're exceeding that, that affordable housing threshold.
Oh yeah, it's a not to exceed number.
Okay.
So I think it's like your ceiling.
Yeah, but if we look at those same numbers to a point, it's, it's the 325-ish, looking at that third, that third bucket for AMI.
Yeah, I think it's good we set a ceiling though.
But refresh my mind, if I'm wrong, that the original concept, I thought was kind of twofold. First would be allow, allow the kind of first-time homebuyers as well as teachers and, you know, the list you gave
Yes.
to be able to come into that neighborhood. And then secondarily, we wanted to make sure that if there's somebody that had been in a home in that area for a long time, that they had a path, a fairly easy path upward to a new house that they could take. That they may have a home that hasn't been approved for decades, but their land has been escalating, and that all of a sudden, if they sold the land for, how much is the, how much of lots, a couple hundred thousand?
I would say 200,000.
200,000, so all of a sudden, if they just sold the lot, scraped the house, to move into one of the Builders of Home, Builders of Hope homes, they have a $200,000 down payment towards
Exactly.
something that provides a path.
Right.
Yeah, it creates.
And so that's, that's what you're achieving.
That is, and it creates, that's that ripple effect where then we can, we can come in and do the same thing into their lots and be able to start it. Flipping these homes, but keeping folks there that want to stay there. Because I've talked to a lot of folks, "I don't want to move from my neighborhood." But yes, my house is, is, you know, because it costs 10,000 to do this, 5,000 to do that, but you're not able to get a lot of, a lot of loans for something like that. But it'd be easier, and one of the things that, that in talking to Builders of Hope, you know, after, after our meeting, Allison, is that they even have partners, financial partners that, like Wells Fargo has a program for them to do just that. They want to be able to move people from renting a home to having their own home and build that equity. So there are even financial institutions in our own neighborhood that are probably willing to partner with us to create some type of financing program to get folks that want to do just that, move into a new home in their same neighborhood with the equity that they already built, because they, they own the house for years, so.
Right, and if we did, some of the lots qualified for the Dallas County grant, that's instant equity you're walking into, because it's a grant, it's not a loan you pay back. So those are situations to where it starts to carve down whatever home and size and price point you're looking for within that attainable housing category. I would say 275 to 375. I think there's a lot of breadth there to accomplish what a family needs. And if they can afford larger and it's a bigger lot, that makes sense for them. So those are, those are some of the thoughts that we have of being mindful and construction costs are more than what they were years ago. So it all kind of has to fit, but it's, it's something that we can accomplish. It's just a matter of who do we want to work with and timeline. As far as financial partners, there, we have met with some financial partners that could provide low-interest mortgages, and they have, we've met with the foundation, and they are interested, and they already do this, for attainable housing. And so certain criteria, you have to meet certain criteria with income. So they're not looking to finance well-capitalized people that have five properties. So, you know, workforce development, workforce housing.
I think this project would be very doable also, and, you know, there are groups, there are philanthropies, places you can get access to financing where people are more motivated by altruistic motives.
Definitely.
And, I mean, this is an issue nationwide, attainable housing. But in our community, I've had many conversations before I even thought about running for council, of a lot of folks that live in what I'm just going to call kind of middle class. And in Chris Gall's district and mine, it's kind of a lot of the older, older central residential homes that were built a long time ago. And a lot of folks have expressed to me, "Well, we feel like, you know, the city wants to push us out. They want to push us out and just build, you know, million-dollar homes." And I think a goal of ours is, and I think it's healthy for all cities, to provide a wide range of housing options. Because as I kind of alluded to yesterday, people kind of go through a housing lifestyle that, you know, I lived in an apartment, and then, you know, I rented, and then, you know, on and on and on. And, and there are lots of folks that want to stay in Farmer's Branch. And I've tried to find some people homes in Farmer's Branch. We've had to go to Carrollton or other places because of affordability. And so I think this is very doable, and I think there's a real demand in the market for this type of product.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think it's a fantastic, especially if you're hyper-focused in a certain area, you're really providing such a gain to the community. And I think other cities could replicate what we're doing down the road. Because I think there's a need for it, and when you are really thoughtful in the design, so you're not putting back houses that you're just, "Oh, I hate that house." Like, we're going to be thoughtful of the curb appeal and the design and the footprint so that the neighbors aren't angry, so that they're happy. The existing residents are so happy that we came in and did it. And then I will, go, go ahead, Michael.
I was just going to say, and there is a trend of a lot of folks that do want to have a front porch also.
Yep.
I mean, if people can find that, it's great. Most of the homes that have been built in the last 10, 15 years don't have that. But that's something that a lot of people really like.
I think it just builds community when you're outside. And if you don't really have a good gathering place outside, it's just harder. And when you have a really small front porch that can't put a chair on or swing, that's harder. So you're really not going to be sitting out there often. And then we don't have any shade. So those are some of the things, just in the design process, that we can solve immediately, and it's not going to cost extra.
And it builds community, it builds cohesion when people are out. And, you know, walking, biking, pushing strollers, walking their dogs. They meet neighbors, they meet people that live a block away.
Right.
And, you know, we're at the City of the Park, we've got a lot of beautiful parks. We're investing in them, and, you know, the trail system. And I think the trend we've seen in the last 18 months with coronavirus, more and more people are using the parks. And I'm just amazed, and I think it's wonderful that, you know, people are out in the parks and, and there are some homes that do have porches and the people are out, and, you know, it's building community.
Yeah, I think so too.
And it's also, you know, a cultural thing, because where, where we're from, it's, when you, when you drive down a lot of those streets, people have chairs even on the grass, because it's what, it's what you do. It's, it's, that's how you create community, to your point. And, and, but I, but I want to go back to a point you made, you know, earlier, Allison, in that, you know, there is, for example, a home, a huge home that is on one of those streets, two-story home, they basically use the entire lot for that home.
Yeah, I know that.
And I cannot tell you how many people hate that house. Because it literally destroyed the ambiance, the, the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And, and we don't want that to happen. And I think, it's one of the, it's one of the streets, I don't know, it's Squire, and then it's two streets over.
It's Green, it's Greenhurst.
Greenhurst, yeah.
Like, or less.
And, yeah, and, and I think that works in other areas of our city, and I think it's working amazingly well, but, but, but not here. And, and for people to actually say, you know, it's, it's an ISO. For a new house to be an ISO, that, that tells you something. And so, so that's why I just, I just want to commend Allison, the work that you've done and, and trying to find the right partners and, and partners that really understand the concept that we're trying to build here. And, and really create something that we know that the community will, will be open to.
Yeah.
And in talking to, you know, neighbors, I'm like, "Hey, if, if we did this, would you, would you, it was like, would you do this?" And I'm like, and then one of them even said, "My daughter's trying to find a house that near, near mine, and she just can't find it." And, and she works for the city of Farmer's Branch. And she wants to live in the area where she grew up, and she can't find one in the neighborhood.
And you talk about yourself.
Because I don't work for the city of Farmer's Branch. I don't work, I don't get paid.
That's right, that's right.
But you are correct.
You work, you work.
Free work. I work for free, yes. But anyways, and that just happened a couple of weeks ago. So, so, you know, so anyhow, I just, I just, again, just thank you so much for, for the work that you're doing. And I think we'll be able to find the right fit for us in the coming months, so.
And these are just the lots that we own. So I would say also, another layer of success for this neighborhood would be, when you see a new house on your street, it kind of shames you into mowing your yard and planting flowers, right? So not everybody's going to have a brand-new house. That's just unrealistic in any neighborhood anywhere.
Right.
But it does kind of change the neighborhood. We've seen it in Branch Crossing, where people are like, "Hey, I'm going to paint. I'm going to spruce up my landscaping," or whatever it is. You know, I've done the same thing when my neighbors first moved in years ago, and they had beautiful flowers, I'm like, "I really need to rethink my flower situation." Like, it's just, I'm like, "This can't be, this now makes my house look terrible." So it's one of those, some people call it the broken window theory. It's more related crime, but it's related to neighborhoods too. But it's like, you know what, you probably should do a little bit better with your front door. So we're not trying to provide housing for all, for everybody on every lot. We are trying to set an expectation for a neighborhood and allow others that want to stay there and love their house, you can. You might want to spruce it up.
And get a porch.
You might want, yeah, build yourself a porch.
I want the porch.
Yeah, I, I love a good porch. I call it functional, because my porch is not functional, and it's so aggravating to me. So I'm sure there's another word for it. So we have two executive sessions coming up, so we can, we can have further discussion about the details of a program like this. So that's what the next steps would be. Today is just a high-level overview of, we have been working on this. Councilmember Retana has been involved, it's her district, and I feel like we've met some good partners. Do you have any further questions for me about porches, paint colors?
Councilmember Mary, do you have a question for Allison?
Yes, I do, thank you, Chris Gall. Allison, thank you, appreciate the overview. One of the asks that I would like to have here as we go into these August 17th, the September 7th executive session. You talked about a couple of what I'll call use cases, how we might engage Builders of Hope on a property that we have. If we could kind of phase out, if you will, kind of workflow, how that would progress in a purchase and acquisition, well, we already have the property, so acquisition is not right. But how that would phase, you had parts of it in the presentation. But if we could see that in a, in a flow diagram of how that would work for that situation, things we already have. But more importantly, you also emphasize in a case where we might have a property owner who wants to take advantage of their own property and take advantage of this. If we could also, on a separate flow, a diagram that. I think that would help understand the mechanics, if you will, of the program and not be clearer, if you will, to others. At least, that's how I would perceive that. And it'd also help me understand the sequencing, if you will. I approve that, I'm, I'm on board with the idea of what we're doing. I just want to make sure the mechanics, the tactical things and operational levels are understood. Strategy, this is a great strategy, I'm on board for that. But let's get into the tactical and operational steps of it so we can better understand it for ourselves and better communicate it to those that are participating or willing to participate.
Yes, of course. I will say this.
Those are my comments, thank you.
Yes, thank you. You'll have all that when we're ready in an executive session format, because it will be discussing land disposition with city funds. That's why we, so I will have all that laid out. We're also still at the beginning of it, so the metrics and the flow and all of that is hammered out. And it's all negotiable too. So, but those things will be provided in greater detail. Today is just the strategy so that no one's surprised that we've been buying these lots ever.
I understand. And the point that I'm making is, from a communication standpoint, how we're to the citizens. I know that there's a, the executive portion of how we deal with purchases and who we're going to engage with. But I'm talking about making sure that we're able to explain the mechanics, the operational, and of one level, the tactical approaches on how this program is going to work. So it's a little bit, we're still wrapped around that communication. But when we talk about this, I'd like all five of us, six of us, including the mayor, that we all have the same sort of talking points, if you will. And that's, that's the onus that I'm putting back on you, if I may.
Yeah, yeah. So once we've, once we determine as a city what we're doing with the program and what the structure looks like, then we will have a marketing component of it. But we're going to have to get through what we really want and how we want to structure it. And then we will have that communication piece on the back end. So it's part of the process.
Yeah, we're still, we're still a little early in it, but we just wanted to keep you all abreast of what was going on in the, in the background. But, but I agree, you know, as soon as we do, we'll be able to discuss all the details and have the entire scope during executive session before we actually, and then after we've completed that, iron that out. Then having those talking points will definitely be helpful. So we know exactly, everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, there's so many unknowns right now, I would say, on our side too. We don't want to get too deep with any one builder if y'all hated the program or we changed our minds, so. We will keep going.
No, I think, and I come from a technology background, and we use the term technology agnostic. So therefore, you're not talking about the builder in particular, but you might say, "This is a financial institution, this might be a builder." Wherever that is, you don't have to call them out specifically.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, any other questions for Allison? Okay. Oh, look how pretty that is.
All right, next up, we have our.
Well, maybe we'll have roses.
Council redistricting the presentation.
Change my mind now. Yeah, maybe you'll have to have a fortune, we'll take a roses.
I think I've got a four at the bottom of my slide, so you may just leave a. Which one? It's going to be redistricting.
Is that the top, right?
Yes, it's the top.
Okay, great. Let me expect it to be up there.
You might just leave it there, because that's.
Over here, or?
Anywhere along the bottom would be fine, because I've got mostly all text and that'll work. Okay. All right. I was asked to kind of give a brief overview of, so we start thinking about single-member district redistricting. We've got a, you know, it has to happen every 10 years, and this will be the first time since the city council went, became its current format of single-member districts that we will actually be going through a redistricting process. So since basically none of you were on the council back when this happened, I'm going to give a real quick, just historical overview of how we got here. Back in, there was, and I didn't even mention, there was actually an earlier single-member district case filed. It was originally back in 2007 against City Farmer's Branch. And at that time, it was determined, basically, it ended up getting dismissed by the plaintiffs. The plaintiffs dismissed it. At that time, we were coming, you know, a couple of years out from the 2010 census, and essentially didn't, they just didn't see much point in going forward with it at that point. It was also using the 2000, I think the 2000 census numbers, they were, they were having a difficult time constructing a viable majority-minority district and within the city because of the population demographics at the time. So that case was dismissed, then in 2010, Mr. Fabella and another group of others filed suit against the city under the Voting Rights Act of 1964, again alleging that the city's single-member, or at-large district of selecting, electing city council violated the Voting Rights Act. district of selecting, electing city council violated the Voting Rights Act. After some delay, because the plaintiffs, again, as you might recognize, they filed it in 2010. Well, the 2010 census was going on about that time. And so we, so there was a bit of delay, but finally in, mid 2012, after the census numbers came out for 2010, there was a bench trial by, in federal district court, Judge Sidney Fitzwater, the chief judge of the US District for Northern, for Texas Northern District, was the, actually the trial judge in this case. And he, in a very lengthy memorandum of opinion, held that the single member district or the at-large district case election process in Farmers Branch did in fact violate the Voting Rights Act. So Judge Fitzwater allowed the city and the plaintiffs to work together to try to go ahead and negotiate and develop a single member district scheme. And so that was presented to, that was developed, agreed to. At that time, we still had to send any changes in voting procedures, which included setting up districts, charter changes relating to, to district voting, as council selection and all that, to the Justice Department for preclearance. So we got through the Justice Department preclearance process. And ultimately on January 31st of 2013, Judge Fitzwater signed an, an order, which is basically essentially an agreed order that included what is now the current district boundaries for the five districts for the council seats in Farmers Branch. Couple of things about that order. It does, that order does not require that we go back to federal district court in order to do our redistricting. The, the order was written in a manner that did not preclude the city from going ahead and doing its own redistricting in the future without going back to court, without having to basically amend the judgment. We don't have to do that. But we still have to comply with the Voting Rights Act and the federal constitution, one man, one vote concept with respect to redrawing these districts. So, you know, so those are the concepts that we'll be working under as we go forward. So, so what's the charter set? Note that the charter, we did not immediately amend the city charter to incorporate that judgment because we felt that the judgment and the district court judgment basically preempted the city charter provisions. And so there were at least three elections we had, or several elections we had where we operated solely under the agreed order, judge's order. So in, but as you recall, in 2018, we went through the charter review process as required by the charter, you know, which you have to do every five years. And at that time, we took the opportunity to go ahead and incorporate the, the provisions from the agreed order into, into the charter. So essentially, again, what we did, of course, we did the amendment in May of 2018 to add section two, seven, 10. It established, of course, as you know, five single member districts with the mayor being voted at large. It requires, the council, charter requires that we do the redistricting every 10 years, first one being this coming January, January 2022 is when we start that process. The provision, the charter requires that each council member and mayor have an opportunity to appoint, or to appoint a member to the, to the commission. And then the council will select the chair of the, of the redistricting commission. The charter does not put a cap on that, on the membership of the commission. So there could be more than just seven members. However, I've done a couple of these in other cities where we've done redistricting in the past in other cities. And I don't recommend going, you know, very large because it, one, it's fairly intensive and two, you know, it, it is somewhat restricting and you get somewhat unwieldy when you get too many folks on a committee. Same goes occasionally for when we're talking about our charter review. If you get too large a group, it, it becomes very difficult. People, it's hard to get schedules going and this is something that you really want to be able to get a group of people who can meet regularly, attend every meeting, because there'll be a number of meetings that we'll be going through, statistics, demographics, different options on boundaries. And you really want, on something like this, even more so than a charter review, you really want everybody there at every meeting if you possibly can. And that tends to be easier when you have a smaller group that you're meeting with. One of the things you have to keep in mind, the charter actually requires a, a little bit of a qualification with respect to who you pick. And so your selections need to be reflective of the demographics of the city. They need to be, and total membership reflect that. So we need to keep that in mind when selecting members to the commission. There's also some specific requirements and qualifications for members. You cannot, you know, you cannot appoint any of yourselves. And it must be somebody who is a voter, a current registered voter in the city and who would otherwise be qualified to sit on any board and commission. So that is a requirement and that is in the charter. So it's not just, you know, it's not just our code of ordinances or, that is a charter requirement. Those who serve need to understand they're going to be restricted with respect to being able to run for council with any, within at least a year after they're, they're serving on the redistricting commission. It doesn't say in the charter why that is, but I'll explain why that is. Basically because obviously if you have some bias, if you think you're running for council and you're on this redistricting commission, there may be some biases of where you want to draw the boundaries and to make sure your, your house lands. So there is some rationale for those restrictions with respect to future council eligibility. Now, get past that one year and, and it's not a problem. You can, but it's, you just can't do, you know, be on the next, you can't just be run for the, in the next election. The term basically runs from when they're appointed to when they issue the final report to the council. So that's, that's basically the term. So once, once they're done, they issue that final report, present it to the city council for consideration, the work of the commission's done. So, and because the work has to be done within six months, basically, you know, depending on when you actually appoint and it's supposed to be in January, by January, when you appoint, you know, the work should be wrapped up by, by July. I'm going to go through, probably the last slide, just some kind of suggested step, you know, steps on kind of suggested, but not necessarily a locked in schedule. So what are the, what's the process? Well, again, one of the things with respect to redistricting globally is, you know, supposed to reflect the constitutional one man, one vote process. So that you have equal, everybody has an equal right to elect. Now, obviously there's, you know, some, you know, some leeway on how that works, but basically you just have to make sure that you maintain districts that are substantially equal in population. The commission is an advisory commission. Ultimately, the commission does not adopt the boundaries. Commission recommends what the boundary should be, but ultimately it is just an advisory opinion, advisory recommendation, and council still has the authority to set the, set the boundaries and final decision. Again, that decision needs to be made within six months after you appoint the commission. So, so establishing the districts, what are the guidelines? Well, we went ahead in, in adopting the provision into the city charter. One of the things we did is we recommended and voters adopted basically five or six basic parameters that are, that are the standard judicially adopted and statutorily adopted requirements for establishing single member districts. Again, the, about, the populations within the districts need to be substantially the same. However, it does allow for some deviation. That deviation in order to ensure that you have neighborhoods that don't get split up, that you have, that you can still draw to the extent you're able to, a majority minority district, to the extent that you, you keep the districts compact, which is actually some of these other things. You, some of the other standards that are listed here, you can have some deviation in the population. The max deviation that typically courts will allow is up to 10%. So, but we try as best we can to keep the populations within the districts as close to equal as you can. Obviously, you're never going to get it exactly nose for nose, you know, the same number of people. Again, they've got to be, you can't discriminate based on race, color, membership, language, minority groups, et cetera, et cetera. So that, I mean, that's, should, you shouldn't have to state that, but that's what we've placed in the charter. Again, you, the districts need to be geographically compact. You've, you've heard the term gerrymandering. Well, you can't gerrymander a, a district. You need to keep them fairly, fairly compact and contiguous with themselves. And you need, and as best, you need to keep it neutral with respect to incumbents. In other words, basically the, the goal would be to make sure everybody who's currently on the council stays within their current district and that we're not, in the next election, pitting two council members against each other, you know, who were in different, you know, different districts into the same, you know, move them in the same district. Now, if you happen to live on the edge of a current district, we'll be paying attention to that. And I, and I'll just tell you, we, when we discuss these and provide the data to our, to the consulting attorney who's going to be working with us on this, we identify where everybody currently lives. So, so the, you know, so in looking at proposed redistricting maps, where you live is, is on the map. So we know, we know with that and we're keeping that in mind. And again, keep community of interest as best we can within the same district. Don't draw lines through neighborhoods, down, down streets of neighborhoods. I know in, in Richardson, the last time we, when we did the redistricting in Richardson after 20, the 2010 census, we, you know, Richardson has a very strong HOA setup within their different communities. And so, you know, while they may be technically in different neighborhoods because they were developed at different times, a lot of times, you know, they've all either voluntarily, either, either through restrictive covenants or even voluntarily have formed homeowners associations that in Richardson are very strong, very vocal and, and very, very politically active when you, with the respect of the Richardson City Council. So those are the kinds of things we had to keep in mind during the Richardson redistricting and will have to do so again this next go around. So is there any questions about these procedures and guidelines?
I have a question related to census tracts. So obviously we're using census tracts to, to create the mapping.
Correct.
When you, in order to ensure the plus minus 10% deviation, will we have even more detailed information than the census tracts?
Yeah.
Because I understood that.
We get down actually to the block level.
Okay, good.
It's, it's block level data. Yeah, it's always done on block level. And, and that's very intentional, especially if you've already gone through a judicial, judicially ordered single member district process. You, you definitely want to go through block level type of, of calculations in determining the demographics. Cause they'll be looking at, you know, they'll be looking at voting age population. They'll be looking at citizen voting age population. They'll be looking at just, you know, population generally and then all, all across race, language, minority language and all that.
And looking at also voter registrations.
Not necessarily voter registration. That voter registration is not necessarily a, I mean, it's, it's usually voting age. So be looking at, at 18 and older.
Voting age and eligibility.
Right.
Those can be two different things.
Right. But I, but I'll tell you, one of the issues in the Fabella case that was argued was, was do you base the, the ability to draw a single member district on citizen voting age or voting age without, and, and don't take into consideration citizenship? And that was, that, that was an argument that was also made in the, in the Irving redistricting case that occurred about the same time. And Judge Fitzwater, in the end, you know, we were, the city was arguing it should be voting age, citizen voting age, not, not just voting age. And the, you know, Judge Fitzwater said, no, you got to look at total population and, and voting age population. So, so you didn't look at citizen voting age. That had some impact. I don't know that it would have necessarily changed the result, but it, it certainly, it certainly made some impact on the requirement to, to draw a majority minority district. And, and if you understand, is everybody saying what I say, majority minority district? What I'm, what I'm talking about? Okay. And so it, excuse me, it makes a difference, but because obviously Dallas County has a significant non-citizen voting age population. I mean, let's just, let's just face it, it does. And it has, it creates an impact on, you know, these kinds of issues. And so, you know, we're not going to recommend arguing that again. We've, it's been there, been there, done that. And, you know, again, I was talking to Mr. Heath yesterday, Bob Heath yesterday, who was our attorney in that case. And he said, probably that, that's now probably settled law is what we're going to do.
Yeah, no, I was just curious. And then the other thing I had a question about was because in the previous, you know, the previous redistricting case, there was a majority minority district that was mandated. Would that be something that we would need to have as well this time around?
We would need to, you know, in looking at the demographics, we'd need to look and, and try to draw one.
Yeah.
I think, I think, because otherwise failing to do so, I think is going to, will probably invite a lawsuit.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, there will be, obviously I think the plaintiffs and/or plaintiffs attorneys from the Fabella case will probably look, obviously looking at our process and, and looking to see how we manage the process. I wouldn't be surprised to, to see that happen. And they, at some point, once we say we've got the commission going, are they going to reach out to us and look at our process? I, I will say, you know, we may have, you know, again, how the demographics show out based on the census data, you know, and of course, we all know, you know, things are changing with the West Side development over Mercer Crossing. And that's going to change some of the demographics and that may, depending on when that population actually showed up, or was actually there, present in that location. Cause keep in mind, we're talking about April 2010 was, was the official, was the official census. So those are the numbers we're going to be looking at. So a lot of people have moved in to completed homes and completed apartments in the last two years.
You mean April 2020?
Yeah. April, that's what, what did I say?
April 2010. I'm like, what?
I keep doing it. Yeah.
I know, I know.
Three times.
The different, the different census.
2020, I'm sorry. Yes, April 2020.
April 2020.
Sorry about that. Yes. And so, you know, we're coming up, by the time we look at these numbers, you know, there's been 18 months since that time. And a lot of people have moved in. Well, they won't, basically won't be included in these numbers at least officially. So that, you know, they may be, you know, may have a greater impact probably in the next 10, in 10 years from now than it might this time. But there will be probably some impact. Cause I, I know in doing some of the, when we used to have to do the, looking, looking at redrawing districts and setting polling places and had to go through pre- looking, looking at redrawing districts and setting polling places and had to go through pre-clearance for department adjustment, justice under the Voting Rights Act, you know, those precincts on the West Side, I mean, if they had 100 voters total on everything, on the voting precincts west of I-35, you know, I think that was probably double counting, frankly.
Yeah.
Which obviously is not going to be the case now.
Yeah, so I know that the census numbers are coming out today.
Right.
And I would love for us to have a separate discussion, once those come out, to look at that prior to, I know we have to start thinking about our, at the end of the year with appointments and whatnot, but I would love to see an, an exact timeline of when those deadlines are, like January 31st.
Hang on. I'm, I'm about to get there.
Oh, perfect, perfect. And then also, just one more question related to this slide regarding demographics.
Sure.
We know that, you know, most likely, it'll be about 50% Hispanic. Does that mean that we should probably have 50% Hispanic representation on, on the commission?
That's-
Something to consider.
Yeah, I mean, that's something you think about. I mean, it depends on, yeah, I mean, when you look at and see how those numbers actually, the gross numbers come out.
Sure.
And so, but again, the way it's set up, council members pick, you know, do the selection. So, you know, it's going to be up to each council member, council member kind of figure that out.
Perfect, thank you.
Kevin, while you switch to the slides, Kevin mentioned Robert Heath. I just want to let council know that, I mean, with the census coming out and with a lot of entities, virtually everybody is going through this redistricting discussion. And so, we've kind of proactively reached out. There's not a whole lot of folks that are experts in assisting with redistricting. So, we have engaged Robert Heath, who's with Bickerstaff Heath, Doggato, Cost out of Austin, who assisted, his attorney, who assisted us with the Fabela case and, and with the current districting that we have, to do the preliminary analysis of the numbers. The, the cost of that is $4,500 bucks. But we've engaged him to do that, and, and then, and if he, if he comes back and says, okay, you know, I've looked at the data, the census data, it shows that you're balanced and fair and even and all that, then that's it, no more money. However, if, if it doesn't prove that, and I have a feeling it's not, that he'll come back with another price to actually assist with drawing the boundaries. But he will have already had the data to, so it'd be, it's not that hard a step to go to that second step. But I felt it was important, the cost wasn't much.
Sure.
And so, I thought it was important to at least engage someone to have them, a known quantity, because he's, he's assisted us, he's well-known throughout the state.
Yeah, I, yeah, in fact, I've, I've known Bob and worked with Bob over, you know, probably over 30 years on redistricting. He, he is probably the, as far as particularly the state of Texas, probably the preeminent single member district attorney, you know, as far as redistricting attorney, Voting Rights Act attorney. You know, almost, almost, I won't say exclusively represents governmental entities in this process, but I'd say probably about 99% of the time, he's on the governmental entity side of, of these cases and of these, of this process. Yeah, like I said, and I've known him forever, seeing him pretty much my whole career. And he, in fact, I talked to him, I actually talked to him yesterday. He, you know, they're supposed to get what they're calling, it's, it's kind of, it's not the official final, but they want to go ahead, but census data is, is doing the data dump today for that. They're supposed to be having a, I think, a, a press conference at noon today to announce it, is what, what Bob was saying. The data that they're going to dump today out there for download is actually not in the format that it needs to be for final use. So, it's going to take a couple of weeks to even get it into usable format, what he's saying. And because our process officially doesn't start till January, they're probably, he did tell me, it probably will put us, they'll probably put us a little further behind on their list of, to-do list, only because they've got March primaries for state, you know, for state governments and county, county elections that are going to be coming up, that they're going to need to get those districts handled first. And so, we're probably won't, we may not see any of the, kind of the really raw information on the numbers, kind of, you talked about, probably for a couple of months. Just because, again, they're just now getting the data today, and it's going to take a little bit to get converted and, and get into a usable format. So, but just understand, be patient. So, you know, we'll give you an update as we learn something. But, you know, the, the plan is to try to do kind of what we're trying to get some of the preliminary numbers before we actually appoint the commission. So, they've got something going in to start working on in January. Again, like I said, probably in the last quarter of this year, we'll do the, kind of, some of the preliminary work, looking, you know, with our attorneys and everybody on what the preliminary numbers are. We'll probably need to be looking at actually some procedures, just some, you know, rules, you know, procedural guidelines of how we want to set up the, the commission. You know, a lot of it's already in the charter, but, you know, we do, kind of like we do a lot of our other ad hoc boards of commission, put in some, you know, who's on first, when we meet, those kind of things. Start looking at applications if you're going to, or at least identifying folks in November, December, so we can start, look, be ready to start doing that appointment in January, so we can kick it off early. And of course, get the appointments done in January. And, and I would recommend shooting for, if at all possible, trying to get that final report from the commission in April or May. It'd probably be ideal to get it done before, I would suggest before the May election, if we can. I don't know, you know, how many, how much change there would have in May with respect to, you know, who's, who's up for election, but I would like to try to get it done in May, even though we've got until June or July to, to actually complete it. That way, you've got, you know, you don't have new council members necessarily coming on and, you know, towards the end of, end of the process, you know, when you've been involved in it and, and been informed of what's going on prior to that. And then do the district boundary adoption in the May-June timeframe. And now, they would be, now, those, understand, those, we're not trying to get this done for the May 2022 election, okay? The way this is set up is to actually be in effect for the May 2023 election. So, that would be the first time, if we do have to redraw boundaries, that would be the first time that the new boundaries would, would take effect, would be the May 2023 election. Or, or unless we had to have a special election to fill a vacancy sometime between then. But after the, after the new district's adopted.
That's interesting.
So, any, any other questions?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Interesting, because, you know, we have a, an open seat, and so, if somebody's running in that election, do, and we would have to take whoever's running into consideration if we have to change the boundaries, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I want to make sure that whoever is running doesn't get, you know, isn't out because we changed the lines.
Right.
They're no longer a part of it.
My, my guess is unless, unless the, and again, your district is probably the one that's going to be the most affected of any, just because of all the westward moving of the population, you know, which might result in some eastern, you know, blocks being moved. I don't know. I mean, again, I, I'm totally guessing right now.
Yeah, we don't know.
But it, a lot, a lot of it's going to depend on, you know, I, I would just caution you, anybody who's running or, or currently, if you happen to be right on the edge of the district, that's probably where you're going to be most susceptible. And so, that's where we have to kind of, kind of look at it.
Sure.
And see. And-
Yeah.
And we should, and we should know, I, I would think before we have to file, and Amy may know when the filing deadline for next year is going to be. I think it's probably usually mid, mid February. No, that's when we start. It's usually going to be-
It's March.
Is it, is it going to be?
Start January.
What's the, what's the file, what's the deadline? Is it going to be, is it going to be, bottom line is that?
I think it's like February 12th or something.
Okay. I would think we would have at least kind of a decent idea by the time filing deadline is done, whether or not, you know, kind of whether or not we're really going to have to be looking at redrawing any of the boundaries, and if so, to what extent after we redraw them. Like I said, a lot of it, I'm hoping, you know, hopefully, we can have a lot of preliminary before we even appoint the commission to kind of get an idea from Bob what, you know, where we stand as far as, as what our population shift has been.
February 18th.
Okay, okay.
I just had a question. You were talking about you can have a divergence of up to 10% in the population.
Right.
That's kind of the maximum, right?
Yes.
And based on the limited experience of, you know, single districts, do people usually try to stay less than 5%? I mean, 10%-
Well, the goal is, the goal is to have zero. I mean, zero, but you can't, obviously, that's not, you know, that's in a perfect world. The, yeah, I mean, if you can keep it, obviously, the less, the, the less deviation, the better,
Right.
the better the, the districts can withstand a challenge, for one thing. And again, again, you're looking at, you know, you're also looking at the demographics. I mean, because I don't know that the, for example, I don't know if the Hispanic population in Farmers Branch has grown significantly more, you know, from where it was 10 years ago. But it, you know, I mean, obviously, there's a possibility, you know, you might have, be able to draw a second district. I, I don't know. I mean, it kind of depends on what you, where everybody, where everybody is. I was in a, one city I represented basically, well, when I was in city in Turin, Curville, and after the 2000 census, we were looking at the numbers then. We had been sued by, you know, Malduff for, to go to single member districts. And the bottom line is, there was no, the Hispanic population in, there wasn't a significant African-American population, and there really wasn't a significant Hispanic population, but there was enough to at least raise the issue in, in, in Curville. But the thing was, they were so, the population was so diverse and spread out throughout the city that there was no way to really draw a compact contiguous district that didn't cross, that where you didn't have to cross the river, you didn't have, because of, well, the river runs through the middle of town. You didn't have to cross the river, you didn't have to cross highways in order to, to get that district drawn. And so, ultimately, the case was, was dismissed. But, you know, that kind of thing can happen in a community as well. And so, it just, a lot of it depends just what those block, you know, that block census numbers look like, you know, going every 10 years, because it, it can change. I mean, you know, it's not impossible that the Hispanic population, I mean, I don't think it's happened in Farmers Branch, but it's not impossible that it also begins to disperse through other areas of town too, that, that then makes that majority minority district more difficult to, to draw. So, I don't think that's going to have happened, from what I understand about how the community's developed. But, but that can happen in a community too, where that happens sometimes, so, over, over time.
Yeah, and that's my goal, when you have some of those random, like, like in my district, I have these random streets on the, on east of it, and I think that happened because we needed, wanted to make it more equal in population, and that happens all the time, because there, there, sometimes you just can't help it. But, but anyhow, but I would love to see the change. Well, I think we'll talk about it when we get to-
Yeah, when we start getting the numbers in, I mean, I think we'll see, you know, one thing that's going to happen is we'll see the first, you know, I'm hoping, I assume, we'll start hearing and seeing the data dumps on the first gross total populations for cities and counties, which we've not seen yet. You know, that has not been, that had not been announced yet. So, hopefully, we'll start seeing that too, because that may have an impact, may or may not have an impact on different statutes that will apply here in a couple of years, you know, because of, because of some bracketing in state laws for respect to certain populations. And so, there'll be some things like that that we'll be looking at as well, you know, just, just on the gross number of population. Doesn't really have anything to do with redistricting, but it will have an impact, may have an impact on some things you're eligible for, some things you're now required to do as a city, those kind of things.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Councilmember Merritt, do you have any questions?
This is a very important, thank you, Kevin, for speaking.
You bet. Right of doing, we'll, we'll keep you, keep your prize as things go, develop.
All right. Okay, it is 10:26, we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back at 11:35.
11:35?
Sorry, 10:35. All right, so the time is 10:40, we are back in session. The next item we have is the residential essential repair program. So, this is something that I requested for us to talk about. This was something that I know I've been talking about since I got on council. And now, with, with all of the code enforcement discussions, I think it's an opportunity for us to, to really talk about it, to help mitigate some of the issues that may have been coming up due to code. But really, the, the premise behind it is, you know, we are now going to be over 50% population. One of the things that-
We, who?
City of Farmers Branch.
You said 50% pu-
Sorry, sorry, 500, sorry, 50,000.
Okay, just trying.
Sorry, 50,000, over 50,000 individuals are in our city. One of the things that we may be able to tap into is some federal funding. And so, we, and that's something that Charles, I want to kind of talk to you about, because I know that there is CDBG funding that we're able to be eligible for. There are certain things, mechanisms that we'll be able to take advantage of. And with that, with community, community development, community development block grants, we're able to use those things, cities are able to use those for things like repair programs, for things like, you know, community courts, those types of things. And so, in preparation for that, one of the things I, I'm wanting to do, because we don't, we really don't know what's going to happen until the census numbers come out, is really use some of the art funds that will be eligible for this for a pilot repair program.
A what?
So, a pilot repair program. And so, what this means, other cities, other neighbors around our, our region do have some iteration of a repair program. I actually had a conversation with MetroCrest Services, and we talked about the possibility of having, just like we have contracts for them for service for other things, being able to, to leave it to the experts, if you will, for a program like this. Because what, what happens is with a program like this, you go by, by AMI, you go by how much they make to see if they would be eligible under certain, certain guidelines and stipulations. And so, they already have those guidelines, because you have to meet those guidelines to be able to get their services already. And so, having folks that already do the, the filtering, already do some of the screenings for these types of programs, we just, I just thought that they would be the best fit for us to be able to do something like this. And so, really, there are, there are certain buckets that I would, I would like for us to consider for something like this. This will definitely, this is definitely going to be a process, because you would need to have, you know, a staff weigh in on, on some of the requirements, looking at what some of our neighboring cities do. But really, there are different buckets that I would like us to consider. There is an emergency repair program, which are things that would affect your immediate quality of life and safety and health, that happened within two to four weeks. And so, that's a specific bucket that we'd be able to use, that someone would be able to apply for. The other bucket is HVAC. So, recently, you all saw that we had a, a police officer go in and help one of our seniors because they didn't have HVAC. That's a huge quality of life issue, and a lot of them are in fixed income. So, this would be able to have some of our citizens that are on that fixed income, especially our seniors, be able to take advantage of that, especially during the heat, during the summer months. The other one is an exterior improvement program. This is one that would completely be related to code enforcement. So, this is one where we could talk to Leo about what are some of the major things that are huge hazards for us and for, and that would help, again, help with the code enforcement violations, right? We find that a lot of folks, in doing some research, it's not because they don't want to mitigate it, it's because they may not have the funds to be able to mitigate it. And then, the other program is homeowner accessibility program. Homeowner accessibility program. And this is a program for any structural issues related to mobility and the health of seniors or are disabled. MetroCrest does a fabulous job in being able to offer a, a program where seniors can get an access ramp. But I will tell you, I had a constituent last year, he was diagnosed with Parkinson's, and he needed to create a wider bathroom. And so, he- And so he, they asked, they asked me to see if we had any programs. Unfortunately, all the programs were not for Farmers Branch, so Metrocrest had one, but they only had ramp program. But this would enable our seniors to be able to get, um, uh, some funds, to be able to do a door widening, um, uh, maybe a bathroom retrofit, so there are two big things that they really need when it comes to, um, being able to, to access their own home, especially when it's something like Parkinson's or something like that. So those are the four different buckets. Um, and usually with these programs, what you do, it's, it's, um, it's a match program, so we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't pay for the entire thing, but it's a match program based on eligibility and how much you make. And so again, Metrocrest Services already does a lot of that screening already. Um, and so, um, then what we would do is we would have to just, um, devise a threshold of what that would be. Um, a recommendation could be up to five thousand dollars, um, until we would have a pool, a bucket, to be able to use the funds. Um, and then, uh, basically, there are certain stipulations that go along with it. You would have to submit a, a quote of the cost to be able to figure out. To, um, oh, well, first you have to be eligible by, you know, how much you make, um, and your expenses and whatnot. And then you would have to submit a quote, um, you would then have to also, um, make sure that, you know, um, the, the case would be open until you actually come back with the final, well, with the final cost after the job is done. And you also have to sign some type of affidavit advising that if you do not complete the work, that you would actually have to owe that money back. Um, and so we would definitely have to go through all of the different, um, uh, through the different iterations of, you know, what we're gonna do, what we wanna do, what we want us to look at. The good thing, though, is that most of our neighboring cities have something like this. And so we have a lot of examples for us to go through. Irving is, is probably the, the example that I'm using the most, um, just because they have, um, some really interesting buckets. Um, and they also use very, um, reasonable, um, uh, thresholds. Um, Carrollton, um, does get CDBG funding, um, they actually filter a lot of that through Metrocrest. So cities are, our own neighboring cities are already filtering some of the CDBG funding already. Um, but, um, but I know part of the discussion that we'll probably, that will be, we will be having is related to that, um, one point nine cent decrease and what we'd wanna use that funding for. So one of the things that I'm going to wanna propose is to use some of that funding to be able to establish this pilot program. And again, it would be something where, um, you know, Metrocrest says they're open to being able to have them facilitate the program, um, especially if we're, you know, kind of, um, uh, assisting with the, the capital campaign. Um, but, but anyhow, that's, that's kind of what I wanted to discuss with you all. I know that some of you all have expressed interest in something like this. Um, again, it's something that I've been talking about for a number of years now, and I think this is the right time, because we have a bucket of funding where it's, it's not taxpayer funding, but it's, um, something where, um, we have an opportunity to use some of that. And then also, in the next year, we're probably going to be able to, um, be getting some of that CDBG funding, because we're now, based on census, census numbers, going to be over that fifty, um, fifty thousand, uh, population, um, which is a precursor to being able to get some of those funds. So anyhow, um, that's kind of what I wanted to, to, to discuss today, but would love your, your thoughts, comments, questions. Obviously, this is not a, a program that is set in stone yet, um, but we kind of want you to have the discussion to start to get the ball rolling, to make sure that we have the right people in the room and can start those discussions collectively on what this would actually look like for, for our city. Um, and it would be across the city, so it doesn't matter where you live, um, you'd be, you'd be eligible. Um, but, but really focusing on our senior population is, um, something that I really wanna focus this program on. And maybe that's where we start, but, um, but anyways, just wanna open it up for any questions, comments, discussion at this time.
So I think this is, this is a great idea. I, I'm wasn't aware, uh, where, um, in, until now, of the community development block grant, um, funding. Um, and so, um, that makes a lot of sense, and, you know, especially with our previous discussions over our Metrocrest funding, that just makes a lot of sense. Um, and I know while I was on that task force for the code, um, you know, that, a lot of our conversations centered around, um, equity and, or, you know, and not, and not putting a burden onto those that were on fixed incomes, um, and, and essentially, you know, pushing them out of their homes through code enforcement. And so, um, and I know that was, uh, that was a big issue for, um, you know, Leo as well. You know, I think his mind is in that place as well, of, you know, how do we, um, you know, not how do we penalize residents, but how do we, um, get, how do we help them in compliance?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
And that's exactly what this is. And with, with that, you know, are, are we envisioning code enforcement, um, running this program?
No.
What part of staff would, would that impact?
So really, the only staff that it would impact is, um, having maybe Jeff's team help us, um, uh, put the word out that it's available. But the goal with the Metrocrest partnership is that they would be handling the program. Just like, um, any other contractual agreement we have with them. Uh, we would let people know, this is the program, these are the stipulations, this is the, you know, we'd have a link to the application, but they would actually go to Metrocrest to apply based on all the stipulations that we give. Um, and then, um, they would be running the program.
Okay.
Um, they would have a, a bucket of funds, and we could say, you can get up to five thousand, um, and then once you're out, you're out. And all the cities, it's a first come, first served program. Um, they do have, um, certain stipulations where it's first come, first served for, um, for example, let's say, we, let's say we wanna start with a pilot, um, for seniors, then that would be the stipulation, they have to be over the age of fifty. Um, there are some cities do seniors and, and families with children that they prioritize. And then some cities get, get, get a, a, a bigger chunk of CDBG funding where it's just eligible as long as you meet the, um, the financial.
Financial thresholds.
Financial thresholds, yes. Um, so, so that's a great thing that we, and, and, and it's great that we have an entity like Metrocrest, because they are the experts. They, they do these filters, they run these filters through all of their programs already. Um, so it'd just be another, another program they could add to their bucket. Um, and, and I also see it as an opportunity to, um, hold, you know, I, I'm sure this, I have full faith that this, something like this would be successful to where some of our neighbors would even do that for their own, um, for their own cities as well, um, through, through Metrocrest, so.
I think Metrocrest has been kind of active in this space for some time, I think quite some time, uh, in, in assisting seniors with relatively minor, you know, uh, plumbing repair, plumbing repairs, some home improvement things, um, refitting and putting in, um, uh, like the, the bars and things to get in and out, you know, bathrooms and showers and things like that. Uh, so, and I think they've staffed that largely through a lot of volunteers. I've known some guys through my church that have participated in that. And I know some seniors in our community who've benefited from, from some of those, you know, smaller repair type things. Uh, not talking about, you know, foundations and.
Yeah, there's a lot of those smaller ones.
Yeah, um.
But I will say, Michael, um, and talking to Nicole, they had to, they had to scale back so much on that, because of liability issues. And so it's very, it's now, it's become, over the last few years, it's become a very limited, um, amount of things that they can do. Um, the biggest one just being a ramp, because of liability with volunteers. And so this would enable ha, to have experts be able to go in where they have, they have no liability with it whatsoever. It's just a con, it's a, it's basically a contractual agreement, that as long as you give us these, these things, we'll be able to give you that, and then the, the funds, and then, um, you know, but making sure we have protection as well to make sure that, um, they, they use the funds for what they said they were gonna use it, otherwise they have to pay it back.
Sure, there's gotta be accountability.
Exactly.
And, and, uh, receipts and everything like that. Yeah, and probably, they may have had to scale back in the last eighteen months also, just because.
Focusing on other things.
Focusing more on, you know.
Sure.
Covid-related emergencies of, you know, housing and food and, and helping families in that regard. Uh, I think there's a need for this kind of a program. Uh, I know a lot of seniors that are in my district that, you know, I've helped with just getting online and learning they can go to UT Southwestern or wherever and get their first vaccine shot. And because I, there's some older folks that I kinda look after and, and check, check on them and, and, and try to help them. And, you know, I talked to some of them a few months ago when the vaccines were beginning to roll out, and they're like, yeah, I don't know how to do it and everything. And, you know, they're not that computer savvy. Uh, so I think there's always kind of an ongoing need, uh, you know, and you mentioned the situation with Officer Babano.
Mm-hmm.
Went to do a, you know, just a safety check or whatever, and, and there are people that are hurting in our community and that need help and assistance, and, uh, uh, and if we can obviously get into the funding, uh, that would, that would, uh, be a good opportunity.
Definitely. Any other comments?
Mr. Stoll, did you have a dollar?
I did, I did. So, um, I wanna start with fifty thousand, and using some of the art fund for that, um, and then maybe doing a cap at five thousand match. That could help us for, with about maybe ten to twenty individuals based on how much they want, cause some of those things are not very expensive. And so, um, and, and anyhow, that's kind of the, what I envisioned, um, for this pilot. And again, you know, it'll, we'll go through this for a year, and, and hopefully by that time, we'll get more clarity on the, um, CDB type, CDBG type funding that we'll be able to get, that will help offset that. And then also, it'll give us, and maybe we do wanna just start with the seniors. Maybe how about we start small, make sure it's successful, and make sure, um, that we can, um, replicate this once we maybe expand it based on how much money we may get. Um, but, but those, um, CDBG funds are earmarked for very specific things, and most, um, cities use these types of programs, um, for, for, for that bucket. Terry, did you have something?
So, uh, just a couple of questions regarding things that you said. You said you talked to some of the council members about this already, who have you talked to?
Uh, everybody. I've been, I've been adding, I've been talking about this during council meetings.
Okay.
Have I not?
I didn't know if you had had individual discussions with people, cause I.
No, 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 it's just been in general.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been talking about it during the council meetings.
Clear in, uh, so you're not favoring a tax, the one point nine cent tax rate reduction, you're not in favor of that?
If it's something, and that's what I'm, if we decide as a council, and that can be a separate discussion, because we're gonna talk about that.
You, you need to fund this program somehow, and you said you were gonna take the one point nine cents.
If we decide as a council to, um, not take that reduction, then we have about one point four million for us to be able to allocate. I think, um, in the, you know, in Mayor Dye's, um, introduction, he, um, advised, um, where some of those funds could be allocated. And so, um, this is something where we could use some of those funds, um, uh, if we wanted to. But, but really, what I'm, the, the bucket that I wanna use this for is ARP. That's the bucket I wanna use it for, is the ARP funding.
Okay, uh, and so, you're just generally stating that you wanna take fifty thousand dollars of city funds to put towards this program?
Those aren't city funds, because, um, they're not taxpayer funds. ARP funding is funding that we're getting through the.
Through the grant?
Through the federal grant.
Okay, it, then, I mean, as long as it's not city tax dollars going into this program.
No, sir.
Uh, I'd obviously wanna have some more details about that.
Definitely.
But, uh, okay, I ju, I just wanted to make sure where that funding was coming from.
Yes.
This would only happen if you get the grant, the block grant.
We would want, yes, well, it's not a block grant, it's, it's.
It's kind of a bridge to the block.
It's, it's a bridge to the block grant, yes.
Because, I, I guess. Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Is, is city money being used?
So let me, let me, let me, let me break it down again.
I guess I'm missing.
No, 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 definitely, cause I'm talking about, I'm talking about different, different buckets.
You're talking fast, so I'm trying to.
I do, I'm sorry, that's, that's the, that's the, the Spanish in me, I tend to talk a little fast. So let me break it down. We have right now, um, ARP funding that we're getting, correct? And we talked about that allocation.
From the ARP funding?
From the ARP funding, we have ARP funding right now.
Yes.
That's the, that's the bucket I would, I would like for us to, um, to tack, to tap into for something like this. It's very small.
For the first year.
For the first year. Okay, so, um, so it wouldn't be tax funding. And then, one thing that we will now be eligible for due to our increase in population are CDBG block grants. And those grants are very specific to community development type of projects. Um, a lot of cities use it for, um, community court, they use it for staffing, for, um, community programming, they also use it for repair programs. And so, um, we need to figure out what that is, because we're, we're just now meeting that threshold of fifty thousand. So for the first year, um, my recommendation would be, and we'll talk about this, um, during the Q and A, moving further, is to use fifty thousand in ARP funding for the first year, for this pilot. And then by that time, um, I hope that we'll be able to know more about what we're eligible for, and then we can relook at, based on the budget, if we can, to continue it, should we receive the CDBG funds, which we will, um, and how much that would be. But at least we already have a pilot, we already have something created that we know we can work out the kink, because that amount will be much larger.
Charles, what do you think about it?
What do I think about it? You know, this is, uh, the council over a number of years has talked about having a repair program, and I think at one point, we had a major remodel program, and the discussion has generally been, what are we trying to achieve? And, uh, and early on with the major remodel program was, you know, the, the, one of the goals of council was, um, you know, whether it be the demo rebuild, or the Renaissance program, or the major, uh, remodel program, was, will these dollars that are being spent to make this program happen, will, will we have a return in terms of an increase to the taxable base of the city? That's been the goal, the, of the, uh, councils in the past. On the major remodel program, you know, if you're making improvements on the residential side, it, it generally doesn't equate to an, an increase in the taxable value. And so there, that's kind of the hiccup that council had in the past about, they were really wanting to, the focus was on increasing taxable value in the city. So that, I'm giving you as, not necessarily my opinion, but historically, the, what council has looked at. A program such as this, it, uh, it is, is not generally going to increase the taxable value. However, it is going to provide, uh, you know, an opportunity for some people to age in place.
This is an assistance program?
It's a more of an assistance program, uh, to, and, and so there's not, if, if, if council's seeking a return, an immediate return in terms of tax dollars, I don't think you're gonna find it here, but in terms of being able to allow an individual to age gracefully in place in a safe environment, this program is for that. Um, you know, we generally, um, we're a small city, and obviously, we can't, you know, and I don't think we can afford to have a complete social services department, that's why we contract with Metrocrest. I'll be honest with you, for, you know, establishing, what's nice about Metrocrest is you can establish a set amount of money and not exceed that. And, and that's real difficult if you're managing a program yourself, and to have, uh, you know, to have this kind of program with the potential impact it could have, and we'll know, we'll know if it's gonna. Now, now you're hearing my opinion, my opinion is for that dollar amount, for the potential impact it could have on someone aging in place, I think it's probably a very worthwhile project, but again, this, this is, it's council's decision on this, and I realize that the taxpayer dollar impact, but I think with this, the ARP funding does provide us that one-time opportunity to, to not say we're using taxpayer dollars. And CDBG is, that is what this is for. So if we could get to a point where we're not using taxpayer dollars at all, then it kind of lessens the sting, I think.
And I, I would be supportive if we got to that point, but I would wanna really see what is the criteria for, uh, uh, doling out the funds and.
And that'd be council.
Have a deeper dive, obviously, we'll get to that point.
Yes.
But, uh, and then what is the contingency for year two? If you don't get block grant funding, uh, does the program die after one year? Or after the first fifty is gone, because, uh, you know, let's just, you know. We've, we've used that funding mechanism, and it, that, that dollars are gone, so what happens now? So.
I think that's a good point, and, and, you know, the whole idea of trying any kind of a new experiment or pilot program is test the waters, measure the results, is it justifiable, is it succeeding in the, whatever the target, you know, or the goal is? And, uh, and also with ARP money, I mean, we're gonna get two tranches, you know, uh, over two years, but hopefully, it would grow into something that with the community development grants, uh, it could, it could kind of self-fund in a way, uh, without hitting the tax base. And, you know, to your point, Charles, all kinds of studies have proven this, and this is something that, you know, in, in, uh, in real estate, you know, the National Association of Realtors and Texas Realtors, uh, they encourage all of us to talk to people about aging in place, and studies have shown people's quality of life, their happiness, and usually their health is much better when they can age in place. And having kind of gone through these kind of issues with my own mother a few years ago, uh, till the end of her life, and, and again, um, I, I kinda look after some seniors and guide them with some of their affairs and what they wanna do, and what are options if they sell, and et cetera, et cetera. Um, I think there's a, there's a need for these type of things, and when people can age in place, uh, whether it's, you know, an old nine hundred foot, square foot house in certain part of town, or wherever, uh, they're happier, they're healthier, and they have a better quality of life. And, and this program, uh, at least, you know, talking about having it capped at five thousand dollars, uh, can make a significant improvement in people's lives and just their day-to-day, you know, mobility and things like that.
One, one thing I do want to make all council aware, I mean, the Officer Bavinov story, it was a fantastic story. But that is not an isolated story.
Right.
Uh, we, we have, you know, between fire, police, code enforcement, uh, the folks that pick up the garbage. I mean, we have a lot of workers throughout the city that are, are, they're watching, they're noticing. And believe me, if they find that we have a resident that is in need, uh, and that is, you know, especially not having air conditioning or something like that, you know, we just don't turn our heads and say, so sad. I mean, and, and, and we, we also don't say, well, we don't have a program for that, you know, good luck. We will actually go out and help find assistance for folks. And so please, please be aware that, you know, we're not cold-hearted at the city. That, you know, we will find, uh, so, somehow, some way, if somebody's truly in dire need, we will find a way to help them out.
Yeah.
Especially when it's a life safety type of an issue. And so, and we have a history of that, of finding, uh, finding resources to get together and improve people's livelihood. And I remember, you know, that, that may be city employees, that might be council. Because we had, I know, uh, Charlie Byrd was, had that, I forget what he called his little.
Concerned citizens of Farmers Branch.
Yeah.
It was operated through the Farmers Branch Rotary Club, but started by, saw that in need and said, what do we do? We have these issues. We have people that financially, physically can't afford to comply. And so, you know, we've always kind of adopted a philosophy, part of the problem is solve on the people.
Yeah.
This is what the standard is, and that doesn't vary, but it's a people problem, and we're going to figure that out.
And wouldn't it be great if we had now a program that our folks can actually say, hey, by the way, this is a program that you can apply for now?
Yeah.
And having a tool to be able to do that. And, and we're in a unique situation right now that we have funds available that aren't taxpayer funds. They are one-time, but we have a contingency plan with now being over 50,000 people with CDBG, which is something that every city gets. It's just a matter of the allocation. And so, um, so anyways, and I think we need to take advantage of this unique opportunity. And it's, it's a very small piece of, of the, of the ARP funding. So I think we can, maybe we can have one of our department, uh, departments kind of have some wiggle room with some of the things we've proposed.
Yeah. And this would require, uh, a, to Councilman Len's point, it would require an, uh, adjustment to the, or possibly a new contract, separate contract.
A separate contract. So it would be a separate contract.
And we would certainly outline all the criteria that, that we would expect them to, to put in place. And so council will have ample opportunity to say exactly what criteria we should.
And they prefer it that way. They prefer separate contracts for separate services.
Yeah.
So that's something that they definitely talked about.
Just a couple of thoughts of financial things to think about. And some of your comments, you were talking about how if the person didn't build the, um, structure or ramp or what have you, and, um, the monies would be owed back. Another, uh, A way to think about that, and we've done this and had some success in working with Metrocrest in the implementation of those CARES funds that we received recently. Um, there's a way that you can structure it in terms of the timing or ways that, um, maybe you pay out a, a fairly significant portion of it because the reason for the grant is people maybe lack cash for it to be able to do those things. But maybe before you make that final payment, you see what you need to see, um, in order to be comfortable in making the final payment. So that's just a thought in terms of, in limit. Because once the person has the money, it becomes a interest in collectability, you know.
Sure. Definitely.
The method and extent that you will go through for collections. Then the second thought, um, at $50,000, um, and already as a subset of a larger portion of nearly $6 million that's coming in related to the ARP funds, we're already, um, crossed into the realm of, um, an additional type of, a special type of audit that's required when you receive that level of federal funding. Thinking about it going forward, so we know we got ARP funds coming this year. We know we have them coming in a future year in those two separate buckets. Um, and thinking about the amount and type of CDBG funding that might come through that may push us into a more perpetual state of having to comply with that type of audit. Um, and I would want to, from a financial perspective, understand what our oversight requirements are in administering that. Are we, you know, obviously we're kicking, you know, in, in the model that you described. We would be sending funds to Metrocrest services. But it would be good for us to have a clear understanding from our counterparts that we have to comply with who gave us the funding, what our oversight is.
Similar to CARES and everything. Yes, definitely. And the good thing, and, and you make a great point. I think the good thing is that we already went through that CARES funding. You know, uh.
We got a little process.
Process. And so then, um, and that's what I meant earlier about we have to have the right people in the room. Um, you know, yourself, Ben, because I'm sure he'll probably help you with this program. Um, and, uh, and Metrocrest, obviously. And then, um, to be able to ensure that we can have all the right mechanisms in place and then have that council discussion, just make sure we're not missing anything, make sure that everyone's okay with this. Um, but, um, but anyhow, that's why I say, you know, defer to the experts. Kind of let us know what are the components we need to make sure we have? Um, and then what are the components that we can have some wiggle room on? But, um, but anyhow, obviously also just be completely transparent. This was a very introductory conversation with Metrocrest. They said, we would love to explore something like this. We would need to iron out the details, but they did give certain things like, you know, um, how much money would it be? How much time would it be? Um, making sure we have a separate contract for this, um, so on and so forth. But this is again, the first time we've actually, you know, I've mentioned it several times on council when we've had the code discussions, um, but this is the first time we've actually sat down to really discuss a lot of what this would entail. And so, um, so obviously as we work through the budget, just know that this is something that I will be proposing as part of the ARP funds. And then I would definitely look to our, um, our city managers to see, um, which bucket that we've already allocated that would, um, be most appropriate to kind of take some of those funds to be able to do something like this.
You said audit and I got scared.
Yeah, when the, when the federal government gives you over a certain dollar amount, you gotta show them some.
I know.
Different audit, different audit.
Okay. All right. Um, Councilmember Merritt, I would love to get your thoughts as well. Any, can you guys?
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Phil. I think there's a lot to, uh, unpack here. And I, my questions have sort of been asked and answered. However, I do have one. You made examples of both Irving and Carrollton. And, and you referred to Carrollton filters as theirs to, uh, Metrocrest. So is there some sort of economies of scale that Metrocrest could use? And again, how big is Carrollton program? Or if they have a program, or maybe it's simply a referral. I don't know, uh, what that process looks like. But I can imagine from Metrocrest's perspective, they'd want to administer two separate programs if they could create a similar program. So maybe, again, integration, obviously all residents. But I'm, I'm just talking about how they scale their program. Um, I'd be interested in those factors. And I'm certainly supportive of this. Um, I do have some of the same concerns about oversight. And, um, I'm more comfortable with, uh, scaling from year one to year two. Uh, but just trying to understand the overall program, uh, and how it would operate as well. So, um, looking forward to further discussions. That's how I'll end the conversation.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. All right. So, um, any other questions, comments, concerns? So we'll, we'll, we'll definitely be continuing the discussion as we work through the budget for this. Um, and we can definitely invite, um, certain folks to our due diligence, do some homework on some of the other programs and figure out what works best for us. So I appreciate, um, sharing some time to really work through this. I think this would be really great for, for our, our residents. All right. So with that on the schedule, we have, um, we have lunch at noon. And, um, obviously it's, it's 11:14 right now. Um, after, after lunch, we had, um, we were resuming our meeting to talk about next steps and Q and A. Uh, my recommendation was to go ahead and, and continue through. Push through, um, start the next steps, Q and A. Um, if we, um, have, still have discussion, once 12 hits, we can definitely take a break and come back. We can do a work through lunch. But at that time, once we hit 12, we can really look at what we want to do as far as next steps. Um, but, so I think we can just push through if everybody's okay with that. All right. Um, so as far as next steps, Charles, was there a specific, um, did you want to facilitate that?
Really, this is an opportunity. I mean, you've heard, you've heard from staff talk a lot. And, and I know we've had some discussions as we've covered each item. You know, I, uh, we tried to hit the major items in the budget, though it's a, it's a very comprehensive budget. There's maybe some things we didn't cover, or maybe some of the things we did cover, you might have further questions on. Really, the main, the main point here, and as I noted early when we started, that, you know, we'll, we'll have lots of opportunity to have further discussions once you may have gone home and had a chance to digest all these discussions. But, uh, I think the point at this time is to take, if there are any, just general questions about the budget that you want to have answered or considered, or for programs that you, uh, that were not included that you want us to look at, just now would be the time to talk about it.
And so I know, um, Mayor Dye, I know you're on. Um, did you want to? Oh, I think he said that we'll, he'll, he'll chime in when he needs to. I think he's fine. He's good. He's good. So, um, so I think we can just go around to see if anybody has any, um, any questions, comments, um, concerns in any piece of the budget that we've discussed thus far. Do you want to go, Councilmember Merritt, do you want to start? I'm putting you on the spot. I'm just going around, doing a little round robin.
Thank you. Thank you for putting me on the spot. There's a lot to digest, as Charles said. And so I think the overviews have been helpful. One of the areas in the public works spot that I'm very interested in is the, the drainage and how we're dealing with that. Trying to wrap my head around the projects that we have. Obviously, Mark is doing an excellent job in that area with prioritizing. I'd be interested in kind of seeing what the grand total of all those 70-plus projects are. Obviously, we picked the priority ones that need to be done. And I don't perceive that we have all the monies to do all the 70 projects. Is that right, Charles? I'm assuming that we don't have the money to do all those?
Well, not, 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 not this year. But, but the, the plan is in the, in the fairly near future to be able to knock them all out, yes. Yeah. And we do have an ongoing funding source to, to allow us to do that.
So understood. Sure. So, uh, just to understand all those projects, uh, even by name, if you will. I'm still digesting the, you know, the magnitude of the budget, uh, and the breadth of it. So I don't have anything. I've been very appreciative of all the time. So I don't have anything to add at this moment.
Perfect.
And if you come back around, I may have something, so.
Sure. No, no worries. I will. I'll come back around. I'll do round two. Tracy, do you have anything?
I don't.
Just want to take it all in?
I do. I want to take it all in. Um, I, I think you guys have, uh, sure, you know, have all the respect for the amount of work, uh, that you do in particular, um, because you check my boxes. And so, um, um, so no, I know, and I know these discussions are going to go further and all of that. And, uh, when I took council, um, I assumed that this first year I would kind of play wingman, um, you know, and, and get acquainted with the processes and, you know, the concerns of the city and the concerns of staff. And, uh, and, and then be able to, uh, kind of go from there. So, um, you know, I think we've had some really robust, um, conversations. Um, anything that I had questions over, um, I was able to address during, uh, the presentations. And so, um, you know, I, I do want to look at, um, the 1.9 cent, uh, decrease, um, with our eligibility of not having to do that with, uh, um, with the leftover. Um, what you call it, Charles? The leftover.
Increment. Unused increment.
The unused increment. That's it. Um, because I think we're in a, in a really unique position right now. Um, you know, especially when, when I look over the history, um, of, you know, of, of decreasing that tax rate. Um, I think, I think this year may be a good year to pass on doing a de, uh, decrease and instead, um, be able to fund, especially, uh, you know, with some of these major infrastructure, um, goals that we have. And, um, I know that our cities has, uh, and our, our, it seems our tax, uh, our residents are, are very interested in the pay-as-you-go, um, model. And so, you know, being prepared for those infrastructure, the street repairs and things like that, I think that just is fiscally smart. Um, so, um, I would tell you, I, I don't think the impact of a one-cent decrease is enough from a resident's standpoint. I think a lot of times they don't. But I know I talked to lots of people while campaigning that did not realize that that had even occurred. So, um, so I, I, you know, I would, uh, I, that's more of what I'm interested in. And I know that we'll, we'll look at that again at study session, um, as those funds then get to be reallocated out if we don't do the decrease. So.
Anything else?
Nothing else. Okay.
Terry?
I would disagree with Tracy.
Surprise, surprise.
What? Well, don't say it like that. Uh, because I really sort of feel otherwise. You know, we gave a quarter of a cent two years ago. We gave a penny. And this is almost two cents. Property values have gone up substantially. The city's put forth, I, I think, a very robust budget, uh, which allows for a tax rate reduction. And I think the, the citizens expect the council to be good stewards of their money. And our job is not to, uh, create these slush funds of money so council can do whatever they want, whenever they want. We need to have plans. We need to have, uh, well-thought-out, uh, opportunities to use money. Streets and infrastructure is certainly that opportunity, but we have money in the budget already that covers some of that. So I think, uh, providing a tax rate reduction, uh, even though the dollars saved are not that great, it's a good symbolic gesture to the citizens that you're doing what's right. You're working to help lower our taxes because they are, we're all paying for it. We are paying for it. But, uh, I, I will probably be on the minority end of that. But I'm just letting you know where I stand right now unless somebody convinces me otherwise that we need to, uh, keep more of the taxpayers' money. In listening to discussion, Charles, Ben, when is the Farmers Branch Connect Act estimated to go live?
It's currently implementing, testing right now on workflow. It's soon, very soon.
Okay. I think that's going to be very helpful for citizens to, uh, report things that they see in the city. And maybe that might help reduce, uh, the phone calls that I, for one, receive uh, from people that are irritated by seeing, uh, certain code violations. We, we've, we had a lot of stuff thrown at us. I don't know that I'm ready to sit here and come up with all of my thoughts. I was trying to make notes as we went along. But, uh, I think that I will wait and use my time in the coming weeks to visit with, uh, Charles and others regarding the questions that I have. It's, I think that the, uh, projects that Mark Bentley outlined are, are all definitely needed and certainly worthy. We talked about trying to throw more money at it once before to speed it up. Uh, and that really wasn't going to help because contractors can only do so much work at a time. So, uh, the plan that's laid out is very good. Regarding police, uh, I see that as the biggest area of need in trying to make sure that not only we are staffed, but we are able to achieve the overstaffing, which, one, won't last very long because we're going to have officers leaving either through, uh, with some type of attrition, retirement, or moving to another department. This is the one area that I think we are. This is the one area that I think we are always going to be behind the eight ball, and a lot of it's related to the current climate. Uh, but, but nevertheless, if you went back a couple of years, let's say, we were still in the need of police officers, because we still have people retiring, moving to other departments, uh, and whatever. So we're, there's always a constant need, and I'm not sure if the two new plus two over hire is actually enough. I'd like to see that number, if we were gonna boost anything, boost those opportunities up to maybe, uh, to like a four over hire, because I just know there's going to be a need to integrate those people into the system sooner rather than later. That's, so, that's a point of further discussion. The, I liked what I heard regarding the electric vehicle charging, but again, I hope if we take that on, that we're able to somehow recoup our costs for that, because otherwise, if we're fueling up everybody's car for free, then we're just running a charity for, uh, the rich who can afford to buy the Teslas and everything else, so, uh, it's, I, I just think that we need to try to recoup costs. I was very engaged with what was presented regarding the art plan, and especially see that we've got money going to, towards the Justice Center. The branch connection definitely needs some updating, and whether it's 2 million, two and a half million, as was presented, I think as you, or staff looks into these numbers a little bit, there might be some ways or some areas to trim to fund the program that you just spoke of, as well as maybe a couple of other things. So, I'm, I'm very excited about that, and, uh, I like Mike Manischburn's vision for what he had in parks. I think, I just think he's terrific, so, I know that. But, other than that, I'll just, I'll wait, because I really need a little more time to sift through everything. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Terry. Mayor Dai is on, so I wanna go ahead and call on him. Mayor Dai, do you have anything to add to the discussion?
I mean, this is high level, still where I was at at the very beginning with recommending not reducing the tax rate, thinking that the opportunity to take care of our roads and not have to do a bottom in the future is huge, because that tax rate increase is gonna par our way, you know, this, this potential decrease, and what we could potentially do, and using some of that money to, in my opinion, reinvest in ourselves, both through economic development, through parks, through some of these other programs. I think it's a great opportunity to, because we're seeing a lot of value from that, you know, look, look at what's happened at the Red Center, the Dog Park, things like that, you know, citizens' engagement and their appreciation for those things, and the use, which is up, shows that if we reinvest in ourselves in the right way, it, it goes a lot further out in our residents' field. That's missing from our funds. And, just to, I guess, to your point, Terry, on, you know, creating slush funds and, you know, not wanting to do the tax rate decrease, my member served me correctly, you voted against the tax rate decrease the last few years, and one of them was to keep extra money in the slush fund for the creeks and water shit and flooding problems on the east side when we didn't have a plane, but it was to store it away for the future, because we knew we were gonna be, and I think we're doing the same thing here. And so, you know, I would just say, you know, rethink that, have another look, you know, no decisions have been made final. You know, it was similar things that we were doing in the past, and we need to carry forward, and if we have an opportunity to take care of some stuff, set up the future of the city and future councils with things they don't need to worry about, where they can focus on things, we're gonna continue to improve the city of Farmers Branch. I think that's what we need now, while we have this opportunity. And, uh, I would also be supportive of your request to potentially look at adding more officers, going from extra two to four, or whatever it's like, I think that's important, and something we should take a look at as well. Other than that, loved all the discussions and kinda heard over the last few days, where the city's kinda going with its budget details, and excited to take the next few steps and talk about it again when we're all back around the table at the next council. So, with that, that's just kinda my, my mental high level, where I stand. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes, as has already been stated, this has been a lot of information, and so these are just kind of my initial reactions, first cut, first take. I've been very grateful for this opportunity to kinda get away from City Hall and meet as a collective group here, and get a broad overview of everything and all the moving parts of different departments in the city. It's been useful for me, and I'd like to just say a couple of things. One, I think a case has been made very well by the different departments that spoke about adding the nine, nine new head count, and I won't go through the different departments, but it's only logical economically as our city has more or less doubled in size and population, and we have more businesses, more businesses coming in, more economic development, that we don't just need to invest in our physical infrastructure, stormwater, drainage, streets, roads, communications, all of those kind of things, traffic management, but also our human capital. And I don't take, you know, increasing hiring and, and adding staff lightly, but I think the case has been made by the different departments that need to increase, and they've showed us and explained how and why they would use these new employees, what they would do. I like the idea, I don't know where it originated, it doesn't matter, that code enforcement and fire department are working together to kind of cross-fertilize and recruit a talented, experienced inspector, Mr. Bonano, that he can just, you know, through the training and then being certified, put on a hat and do some fire inspecting, and as Chief Vargas explained yesterday, take some of the load off of fire inspection to focus on the bigger, more complex buildings and potential, you know, fire hazards, and less time on the smaller mom and pops, as he described. I think that makes a lot of sense, that's being good capital, uh, human resource management, and we've just got so much here, I need a lot of time to just digest it. I also obviously wanna speak with, you know, friends, neighbors, and, and other constituents, and, um, I was pleased before I got on council, when I was on planning and zoning, with the direction of the city, the growth of the city, investing in our infrastructure, investing in our amenities, and I get a lot of positive feedback from people about how the city is growing, and, uh, I, I know many people that have moved to our city in, say, the last two to five, six years, they're renting an apartment, renting a house, and they're saying, hey, we didn't know much about Farmers Branch when we moved here, but we've learned our way around, we see what's going on here, we really love the city, and we wanna, you know, kinda graduate, if you will, and buy a home, buy a townhome, whatever, and make this our permanent home. And I think we've got so many things going for us, the opportunity with the art money gives us a lot of flexibility, that, you know, funds we were not expecting, and it's coming in two tranches over two years, and so I think, you know, we need to challenge ourselves to think creatively, to, you know, be open to ideas and discussions, how we can constructively really use these funds to further push the city and grow the city, and there's a ton of projects here, and I think we all need time to digest them. I'd like to make two points. In Texas and in our region, the economy is booming. This is one of the most attractive job markets, companies are moving here, companies are expanding. That may continue, it may not, and in planning, you know, we've gotta be prepared for different situations and scenarios, and I'd just like to remind everyone, we thought we were kinda through COVID. We thought we were on a road to recovery. The Fed was talking about tapering and all these things, and just in a little bit of time, I've had free time here, I've seen the airlines are talking about already, well, you know, projections are going down, you know, reservations are going down. We're not out of the coronavirus, and we have the Delta variant, they're more on the ways, according, more on the way, according to epidemiologists, and it's gonna have an economic impact, and none of us can foresee that. So I think we need to be careful and judicious in this budget planning, and I personally would like to reserve, would have time to reflect and, and think about if we need to do, basically rounded up, a two-cent reduction in the property tax. We've done two in the last three years, and I just don't know if, if that's really warranted, if we need to do that. And that's kind of all I have right now, and I think we're gonna go around a second time, right?
Yes, we can.
But, again, this is an ongoing discussion, there's lots of things we can do, and whether it's the trail plan or the street plan, you know, we've got shorter, medium-term, and longer-range plans where we wanna see the city go, and I think we just need to be very judicious and creative about how we can best use this, basically 12 million dollars that we certainly weren't expecting, you know, that will come in these two tranches in the next two years. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Driscoll. Um, so this is definitely not some of our first rodeos, we've been, we've been doing this for, for a couple of years. Um, I do have some, I just wanna go through some of the things that we talked about today. Um, you know, I think public safety, well, public safety is one of our biggest, is our biggest asset, and it's also, also takes up a, the biggest part of our, of our budget for, for very good reason, and I think that especially as my district is growing, and just growth all over our area, I do think we need to be more proactive, and, you know, we, we didn't foresee the growth in the past, but I think now that we're a very unique opportunity, that we have a, a, a budget that we're able to kind of serve some of those much, much-needed opportunities, that I would also like to see what it would look like to add a couple more officers, so we're better prepared, because the growth is happening, and it's happening very, very fast, and in, in talking to, you know, our officers and whatnot, you know, as I mentioned before, mental health is a huge passion of mine, and I just wanna make sure that they're in a position where they're able to take the time off that they need to take off, they, they're not strained or stressed, and so I would definitely like to explore adding a couple more over hires, and what that would look like, just to see what that would look like in our budget, and then where we can maybe allocate some of those funds, or get some of those funds from other buckets. I, you know, the, the stair-step approach is definitely very much needed when it, when it came to the discussion on the compensation study, to make sure that we're competitive with, with our, with our park, with our neighbors in our region. So, so I wanna thank Brian for that, I know he's not here, but, but it, but it was a lot of really great information that I think can help us in, in kinda moving in, in the right direction with that. As far as communications, I know I'm always talking about the, the need for us to ensure that we have the resources and the assets for us to be better stewards with our constituents, so, um, I, and I, and I talked about this, but just challenging our, Jeff and his team to make sure to arm us with the proper communication mechanism, so we can make sure to tell the story when, when things are changing, and I know Tracy, that's something that, that you've mentioned before as well. But also I want us to really look at future needs. It may not be something that we can add to this budget, but looking at the need for another team member for Jeff, so that way we can make sure that we meet those communication needs, and also ensure that we do it in both languages, in Spanish and in English, especially as our demographics change. Art funds, very excited about everything that was proposed with the parks, we are a city in a park, and I feel like because of that, we do need to invest in those, in those new innovative infrastructure needs. I think making sure that we invest in the branch connection and in our Justice Center and in some of the other renovations that are needed. I think we have a very unique situation in our hands, where we're able to do that and kinda check those off our list. Um, you know, one thing, though, that I do, that made me start thinking about when we were talking about, you know, the park on the west side, is we talked about what other assets are gonna be necessary as that community grows. I know we've looked at, you know, a satellite library location, because it's definitely further away from our library. What are there things, and obviously, we're not gonna tackle all this in, in one day, in one budget, but really looking at and, and challenging stuff to look at, what are there ways that other cities are trying to make sure that other areas of their cities that are maybe too far away from some of our, some of our community services, how they can tap into that. I know one of the things that we've explored is, is having our library be mobile. I know other cities do that, maybe we have mobile sites on, on other sides of our city, even in our apartments, right? So I think it's something that we can really think about and really try to be innovative. As far as economic development, Allison, you know, we, housing is big for me, attainable housing, so I'm really excited about the program and, and how far we've come. I know John Norwood would be very excited if he was here, because this is something that is near and dear to his heart as well, so I wanna make sure to mention that, because I know it started with him, I kinda, kinda came on the bandwagon, and so I'm really excited about what we're doing there. The landfill, I know that we talked about, about that, it's a huge asset, but we also need to think about the future after, after that is, is closed down, and, and one thing that I know we mentioned is having a presentation about that for, especially our new council, and what that looks like, what is the plan, just to make sure that we're all in the right, we all know exactly what's going on. I think what happens with council, with new council members is a lot of times they don't have the history, I know it happened when I was here, so, so I wanna make sure that all of us have the history of all of these big projects that we're doing. So going, talking about the, the reduction, you know, and, and Terry, I was with you when we talked about not, not reducing the rate, because that was a couple of years ago, because, you know, we did, we had that new law, the three and a half cap, and we didn't know what was gonna happen, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, you and I talked about it, we wanna make sure we had assets to be, or money to be able to, to fix a lot of the drainage issues that we had, and so I think right now we're, we're back to that unique opportunity where we're able to really build up some of those buckets for future needs, because to your point, Michael, we don't know what's gonna happen with COVID, we don't know where, what's gonna happen with, with, you know, as far as our economy goes, and so I think we're in a unique situation where we can add funding to those much-needed buckets, we can add funding to the parks bucket for, for future, not new needs, but I'm talking about maintaining the parks we already have, because that can be expensive, and we have a, and what's great is that our staff does a really good job of putting a timeline of when we think we may need to relook at a park to make sure that we fix the things that need to be fixed, and so having that bucket, to the mayor's point, having more money in the infrastructure bucket for streets, and so I think that's something we need to, we need to really think about, and so I know, you know, I know we're gonna continue the discussion in the future, but just being able to have those reserves in, in those buckets, and, and for economic development, because I think that we're doing a lot around the I-35 corridor, and once a lot of that construction goes through, there's gonna be a lot more opportunity, and we're gonna be competing with folks, so making sure that we have funds in that bucket to be able to, to, to be competitive and bring more roots down, and bring more, you know, cedar creeks down, and, and really try to be, to, to, to enhance our quote-unquote downtown of, of Farmers Branch along the I-35 corridor. So, so those are some of the things I wanted to mention on, on some of the things we, we already talked about, and I know we're gonna continue the discussions, but I did wanna plant a couple of seeds on a couple of things. We already talked about the repair program, so thank y'all again for, for indulging some time during this discussion for that. Translation services, I, I keep mentioning that, because I think it's very, very important, and I do wanna applaud staff, because they have been doing a great job in slowly starting to, you know, I saw the Face-Max, Face-Max post that they did, and they did it in both languages, but it's, it's a matter of capacity, and, and I don't think we have an individual dedicated to that, and I think we need one. One thing that I know that's happening a lot around our, our state and other cities that I want us to think about too, and, and I bring it up during budget, because it may be a budgetary item, it may not, because I know there are very free programs that are offered nationally. A lot of cities, and, and, let me put it this way, our police officers go through a lot of training on mental health, unconscious, implicit bias, you know, cultural competency. Why not hold our own selves accountable for that? And I think that our city council, any elected and appointed official needs to have to go through that, needs to go through that training, and now what's happening is even cities are now starting to filter that training to staff, and especially staff that is, you know, that are at the front line. I'm not saying that we, our customer service is bad, I think our customer service is great, but why not be able to arm ourselves with that other layer that we may not, that, that some of us may not be privy to, because we may not have the, the, the proper channels to do so. So I wanted to plant that seed, and obviously it, it comes down to figuring out what, what is offered, what is offered for free. I talked, when I talked earlier this week with Chief Vargas about mental health versus I talked, when I talked earlier this week with Chief Vargas about mental health first-day training, that's free training that we can have. And so, but I think it's very important for, especially at least at the very beginning for our, we go through ethics training, why not add another layer to do, you know, implicit bias and cultural competency training, just like our first responders do? Because I feel like we are, in a certain, in a certain sense, responding to the needs of our constituents. So I just wanted to plant that seed. The other thing is, is I did have a question, and we haven't talked about it in a while, but regarding our monument signs. I know we had a plan for those, and I know there are certain areas that we were targeting for monument signs, and I didn't quite see it, maybe I missed it in the budget, but I don't, I would love to kind of see where we are on that, especially as we're developing with I-35 corridor. I know we talked about that, you know, where the monument signs going there. But I think it'd be great to give some of the history to our, to our new councils about, and that's something that I know Mayor Di has spearheaded, and it's been really great for our city. And I know he has also some ideas for that with our, our I-35, you know, future quote-unquote park, if you will. And then the last thing that I did want to talk about, and this may be something that could, we could, we could wait to do during a briefing, is, you know, looking at our calendar for the year, for, you know, our council calendar for the year. I know that it gets prepared and it gets sent out, and there are certain changes that happen based on things that happen, you know, statutorily. But, you know, one of the things that's happened over the last, you know, 10 years is we're getting, we're getting different individuals join our council. And a lot of them have a lot of constraints when it comes to work and whatnot, but we can't, we don't want to limit those individuals from being able to serve, you know. And so one thing that I would love to explore is, is when, when do staff start preparing the calendar for the year? And how can we be involved in that discussion? So maybe it's not a Tuesday through Thursday type of retreat. Maybe it's a Thursday to Saturday, or Friday to Sunday, where we're really able to not have to, you know, I know some of us had to work late last night, because we had our, our, our work, 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 the paid work that we had to work on. Not to change everything, but just to start thinking about ways that we can just be a little more, a little more part of the conversation. You know, maybe instead of starting at, you know, two or three for some of our ad hoc meetings for boards, maybe we start at four, maybe we start a little later on in the day. Because there's lots going on, you know, and so we, again, I just don't want to deter folks from being able to serve, because of, because it is a huge tight commitment. And we serve because we want to serve our city. But anything that we could do to make it, make it easier for those that are serving, and myself included, I will say that too. But, but just would love to be, I would love for the council to be a part of that, that, the calendar scheduling conversation. And so, so anyways, just wanted to throw that out there. Again, that may be more of a briefing thing, but in preparing for this, for this retreat, I know it's something that some of us have been thinking about, so. So with that, that is all I have as far as comments or questions. So I'm going to go ahead back, back around one more time to see if anybody has anything else that may have been triggered by the conversation. So Councilmember Merritt?
Sure, thank you. I'll just recap that I'm interested in looking at positioning ourselves for the long term so that debate and discussion that will come around with how we apply the 1.9% potential of a reduction. I think, I'll be honest and upfront, I'm more of a person at this moment that would like to reinvest in going forward, positioning those funds that better allow ourselves as a council and future councils to benefit from prudent fiscal planning when we have the opportunity to do so. I also think it's very poignant, and it's been mentioned that we need to maintain our public assets. And so putting the funds aside to maintain our community assets, certainly important. So the opportunity to buffer these funds going forward is in front of us, and it makes good sense in my mind to take that action. But it will be a discussion, and we will find out where we land. I really don't have anything other to add. Again, I may have said it earlier, it's not, I will say it again, but I want to thank the staff for putting all of this on. I want to thank Kevin for making sure that I had virtual connection and the ability to do this remotely. And it does go to what Crystal just mentioned, council calendaring. It is important to know when we have such retreats so we can get them on. I know we have one, and there's other planning sessions that we have, so having those in the forefront are helpful from a scheduling and availability standpoint. So that's always good to know. And as my wife was debating with me last night, do we book our next, you know, vacation before school starts this week? I was like, well, do I, what is the date for the next council retreat? Budget retreat? So it, while it's humorous, it is very helpful in planning so we can make sure that we can be participatory. So thank you so much, and I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Merritt. Councilmember Willie?
I don't have anything to add to what Laura said, other than it is harder to rock something back than what it is to have never given it. So, I mean, with the 1.9, if we don't take an opportunity to save now and to plan, not for discretionary spending, but for known issues that our city faces, you know, it's a lot easier not to give a tax break than what it is to increase taxes, because we've got a shortage. Especially if we're going to talk about adding even more staff, because with staff, you know, that's, you can't walk staff back either. Walking staff back or police officers back, that's not something you can do either. And so those budgetary constraints are going to get tighter, and I think we are in a unique position to prepare for that. And so, just remind us to, you know, to think about that.
Sounds good, thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
There have been many times that I've changed my position on things over the five years. If you remember, I was against the solar project, but then after listening to argument, or not argument, information presented by Councilman Norwood and others, I said, okay, that's a rational argument. It's not 1.9%, as I've heard somebody say, it's 1.9 cents. So just to make that clear. All I need is a plan. Show me a plan that will help me justify keeping this money. That's not unreasonable. But to say we're going to keep it without having a plan, then that's, that's where I have difficulty. So let's create a plan, if it's that important.
We can show that to you, but bring that back to the next council.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, and this is, and this is again a discussion, we're looking at where we're, where we're leaning towards and see if we're open to it, you know. We advise that we're open to the 1.9, so I think that's, that's what we'll go next, is we'll be sure to put together a plan and go from there. Anything else, Councilmember Lynn? Councilmember Brudresko?
I don't have anything really additional to add to my previous comments. And again, I'm grateful for the opportunity we've had here the last couple of days and also the discussion that we've had and we're having right now. There's a lot of work for all of us to do still, and digging into these projections, these numbers, the budget, the different departments. And again, I'd just like to challenge all of us to think creatively and to think long-term about, you know, doing the best we can for the city. And just my thoughts right now about 1.9 cents reduction. Again, I'm open, I reserve judgment on that. And I think we'll have more, you know, deeper discussions about this. We could do that, we could do one cent, we could do nothing. And, you know, I'm open, and that's all I have, really.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor Di, anything else you would like to add?
No, I'm good. Just want to thank staff and everyone for their fantastic dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything else to add, but I'll just echo what the mayor just said. Just thank you all so much for your time. Staff, you've been amazing. It's really great, sometimes I wish we had this very beginning of the, like, you know, when you first get on council, because then you're getting like a little bit prepared about whatever all the departments do. But anyways, it's been a really great discussion, and so really just want to thank you all for your time, effort. And, and just, I just ask patience, as we, all of our council members kind of go through this and digest it, but I'm sure we'll have some really great discussions moving forward. So with that, Charles, I want to turn it over to you. Do you have anything else you want to add, anything you want to say in closing?
No, just, well, I do want to, I do want to say thank you for, I realize that this has been three days of time out of your busy schedules. I said, I want to say I appreciate that. The, and I realize that that, you know, that's a commitment. And I also appreciate the openness that each of you have had in terms of listening to the proposals and having, I think, very constructive conversation about the finances of the city. You know, I know sometimes you go, people ask, why are we having this, you know, away from the city? And I've been involved in budget retreats over my years in the profession, where it's been at the city and not at the city. And what I find is generally, you know, this once-a-year opportunity provides just an opportunity not just to, not just to hear dry, boring budget stuff. It's, we get to-
It's not boring.
Okay. But, you know, we get to know each other and establish, I think, a good rapport. And yes, we have differences of opinions, but at least we can kind of constructively talk through that. And I think that's a good thing. I also am cognizant of the fact that we have taxpayers that, and voters that desire transparency, and they deserve transparency, and so that's why we always record these sessions. It doesn't necessarily have to be live, because there's really nothing that would be added if it was live, but it is available, it'll be available for anybody that wants to, to see the deliberations of this council on the budget. And so I want to make sure to let you know that just because we're a little bit away doesn't mean that we're not transparent, we are transparent. But I appreciate that opportunity to get to know each of, each of you better, and I hope you get to know each of us better so that we kind of get a trust and a feeling that we're all trying to do what's best for the residents of Farmer's Branch. And so anyway, I think there's some value added by having it in this kind of a format. Because the conversations during the day and then the conversations over dinner are very, very beneficial. But in closing, I just want to mention, thank you for your time commitment, I appreciate that. And I know that staff has, has got a lot of good and valuable insight regarding this budget. And I think, I think this is, is one of the best budgets that, I mean selfishly, I can say that, I guess, but this is, this is a really incredible budget that truly is, I think, going to be transformative to Farmer's Branch and the residents. And I like, you know, with tax caps and COVID and all these doubts about the future, if we can put in place a financial system where a lot of things are kind of on autopilot, and when I say a lot of things, not a lot of, you know, just, you know, very discretionary, flowery things, I'm talking about basics. When you're talking about streets and parks and creek improvements and water and sewer improvements, I mean, these are the basics. And making sure that police and fire are adequately compensated and we're competitive. I mean, if we can put in place a financial system and a path where the future will kind of, to some degree, be on autopilot, I think that's a pretty nice deal. And we are in a place that we're positioned, I think, a lot better than virtually every other city around us, and that's a good thing. And sometimes you have to, you take, you take the golden ring when you can grab it, and it's right in front of us. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to move this city forward in a meaningful way, in an impactful way. Because I look at, you know, when we're looking at limited resources, I look at what is the most impactful for our residents? And to be able to say that, you know, we, our facilities are top-notch, our streets are top-notch, you're not having to worry about the creek running up into your home, or your, the bank of your home falling off and you're home with it, that, you know, we can have water and sewer systems that we're delivering clean water, that we're providing good trash services. I mean, we, we provide some stellar services, and I want to make sure that we continue to do so. And I think we have that opportunity to be in a really good point, a really good stance in able to deliver services to the residents at, you know, we talk about the tax rate, the bottom line, when you look at the tax rate around us, especially like with Dallas or some of the larger cities, it's an affordable tax rate. And the level of services that we provide our residents, I will, I'll put up against anybody else. We do a great job, and this budget not only will continue that, that level of stellar service, but take us to that next level and make sure that we're sustainable and can go, it can move further. And I'm not a debt kind of guy personally, and I've tried to, since I've been at this city, I've tried to keep us from debt as best I can, and that's why we have low debt at this point. We have no debt in the water and sewer fund. And I see over time, and one of the things the rating agencies have noted, is that we are a very short, low-debt and short timeframe payoff for debt. And so that's one thing they note for us, is that we have, we have very short maturity. And so we are on the path towards having even less debt. And this budget, and especially if we talk about, you know, alternate uses for that 1.9 cent tax deduction, reduction, we could be on a path for a very long time of not issuing debt, if the council so desires. So, and with that, thank you.
Again, thank you all so much. I can't believe we ended it before lunch. But thank you, Councilmember Merritt, for your time, and Mayor Di. We missed, we missed you both, but we'll definitely be continuing our discussions. Again, thank you, staff, for all of your work. And with that, we will be adjourned at 12:02 PM.
And lunch is-
And lunch is next.
And lunch is ready, and it's next door in the dining room, so we can go ahead and head out.